Pardon me. Uh, bienvenidos, welcome. I call to order the work session at the Beaverton School Board on November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four at six twenty-four P. M. In attendance, Susan Greenberg, Dr. Melissa Potter, Senior Guard, Ugana Inyaya, Justice Rajee, and Dr. Tammy Carpenter. Uh, Dr. Karen Perez is excused this evening.
And Tammy just stepped out.
And Tammy just stepped out. She'll be right in with us. Uh, the top of our work session this evening is Youth Services Program. Superintendent Valderras, where you get us started?
So, thank you for the, for the opportunity, and I have Casey Waltage, your Associate Superintendent, here to have a discussion regarding our Youth Services Program and what, just provide background. So, both contracts end at the end of this year, and want to make sure the board, we get direction from the board. We'll have another, um, presentation next month to get clearer direction in terms of how the board wants us to proceed with this. But tonight, we, we're gonna provide you an overview of the YSO program, um, kind of a little history, and also a timeline for decision-making that the board, uh, is gonna need to be able to, to, uh, to take action on prior to, uh, June, when both contracts expire, June thirtieth. So, turn over, Casey.
Thanks, Dr. Valderras, members of the school board. Appreciate you having me present tonight. Like Dr. Valderras said, one of the things as we look into the Youth Services Program that has been beneficial, specifically to me and new members, is to look at a little bit about the history of the program. So, we have some information, also some of the, um, community engagement outreach that has happened over the past, um, several years. We're gonna go into that a little bit and then, uh, open it up for a discussion. A little bit of the history, um, of the SRO, previously, they were called School Resource Officers, and now they're called Youth Services Officers. Uh, we'll go into the change, but they are, uh, in the name, but they are, um, met all of the same, just different meanings, different times. So, one of the things to consider is the SRO-YSO program, we've had a long history in the Beaverton School District with their law enforcement partners, going back over forty years, um, to initially teach bike safety and traffic safety to students. Um, really, when, uh, the SRO-YSO, um, program became more formal, a more formal agreement was, uh, in the nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-six, uh, school year, when, uh, we started, uh, partnering with our law enforcement partners to teach Dare and the GREAT program. Um, it is, it was a program that began, uh, in that period of time. It started to change, the shift of, uh, really, nationally, law enforcement, um, shifting focus within schools, really started, um, here in Oregon, uh, with the Thurston School Shooting in nineteen ninety-eight, and then following up a year later, uh, with the Columbine, um, tragedy. Those two things really, um, changed the direction of, um, the partnership between law enforcement and school districts, going from more of, um, a, a teaching mechanism for programs like GREAT and Dare and Traffic Safety into a more school safety focus. Um, one of the things that also, um, happened right around that same time as we started to, um, go through the early two thousands is just formalizing, um, our IGA agreements, um, to be, so we were able to, um, formalize what the SRO-YSO program is, what it isn't. There have been several iterations of that, um, going all the way to our current agreement, uh, like Dr. Valderras stated, that we're in, uh, right now. One of the important, uh, factors to keep in mind is, um, what have we done as a district, um, in recent time, and I'm talking about in the last four to five years, to gather community feedback, um, from staff, students in the community regarding the role in YSOs? One of the things that I put this slide on is, going back to the, uh, two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year, there was a, uh, Eco-Northwest Analysis SRO Experience. We've linked that in, uh, the document. It, uh, isn't something that is, uh, was, is super readily available. It's been several years about that. We'll go into a couple of slides, just on the, the basis of what that said, um, here in a little bit. Um, in that year, that happened over, uh, over the summer. Um, what happened also to the board at that time is in November of that year, that information was presented to the board, uh, to review the data. In, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, um, we, we contracted the school board and the district with Sea Change to do a comprehensive SRO review and board report. Um, the key recommendations for that, we'll go into a little bit, uh, different, uh, a little bit later, but one of the key responses, there was a, a, a document that was, uh, drafted and compiled from the district that was in December of, uh, two thousand and twenty-two. One of the things that I want to focus on is some, really some good background information for those of you that wanna, um, take a look back at previous board many, meetings. In, uh, in January of two thousand and twenty-three, there was a district presentation on, uh, the Sea Change Report and what all the recommendations came out of that, and how the district, uh, was responding to those recommendations. So, lots of good information, uh, for that specific report, and the, the look for us that came out of that, and also how the district was going, was responding to some of those recommendations from the report. Um, moving forward, uh, past that is, um, last year, last school year, uh, we had some presentations, uh, regarding, uh, Youth Service Officer data reports, um, um, in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four, and then, um, a little bit later on the June eighteenth board meeting, where we had some, um, information. Uh, we also have traditionally had, uh, yearly program reports, as we do with many other programs. Um, going back a little bit to, um, some data, I was gonna, we pulled out of the two thousand and twenty, uh, Eco-Northwest Community Survey. Um, again, I'm not gonna spend a whole bunch of time on that, but, um, there was about twenty hu- twenty-five hundred responses to that survey that went out, um, during that summer of two thousand and twenty. The data is, um, kind of broken down here on the, in a, in a kind of a elementary, uh, version of the, uh, positive reaction, the negative reaction to, to YSOs, uh, in the Beaverton School District. Here's, uh, the data, just, uh, represented differently graphically about, um, uh, support of SROs in schools from the respondents of that survey. Um, you'll find, uh, you know, that, um, who believes that agrees that SRO should be in schools. You're also gonna see some neutral, um, some unknown information about, uh, if they're neutral or don't have enough information, and then those who, uh, said that, um, they disagree with, uh, SRO should be in school. So, a piece of data, uh, back, going back a little ways, uh, to two thousand and twenty. Um, the result of this, I wanna believe, and I, you know, I'm just reading through information as not being here at that point in time, um, led to some of the more comprehensive look, um, that the district did with the Sea Change Report in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, we're gonna go into just a little bit of that right now, and I think everybody in the board is familiar with this report. Um, again, part of this presentation is to go into a little bit of the history. So, we pulled a, a couple of graphic illustrations of the main survey questions for the data to show just how staff, students, and the community felt about YSOs as a refresher. Um, all this report is linked, I'm sure many of you've seen it. Um, so, we basically pulled the data from the survey, um, and broke it down. So, this is the data for the parent survey report, um, of the respondents, showing graphically the support. Um, again, um, there's a, a question about don't know about SROs, don't have any back, a lot of background information. There's an undecided, uh, section of respondents, and then there is, uh, a, a percentage of, uh, parents that do not support, uh, SROs in schools. So, you can look at, uh, this, seventy-one percent of the, of this demographic indicated support, twelve percent indicated did not, do not support, and then there's a middle that doesn't have enough information or undecided about, uh, YSOs. Again, this is the student version, uh, of that same survey that went out during the same timeframe, uh, shows, uh, support, um, a, a larger piece of the pie, um, don't know information, don't know about SROs, um, a, a little bit larger, um, also than the, the parent version with the undecided, and then, uh, a little bit smaller version of the do not support SROs in schools, based on the data presented. The, the third graph is gonna show our staff reaction to, to SROs at that period of time, um, and, and you can see the data there. From the, the, this, uh, program review, there are really about, there was a lot, there was a lot of findings, they kind of, uh, go into these five different categories from the Sea Change Report about, um, the key findings, and we'll, we'll go through, um, a little bit of the recommendations. Again, I, I would like to, um, go back to the, the January two thousand and twenty-three, uh, board slides, uh, and that information really did a comprehensive review of the report and, and how the district was responding to those recommendations, because there were, were several and different options. So, um, here's the key recommendation areas. What the report did is it kind of broke it down into, uh, two packages. Package two also has a two B package, um, that is explored in that, and really one looking at, um, a package that has, uh, revising the, um, role of SROs, YSOs in the district. Um, you can see a lot of those things are probably pretty familiar to, uh, the board, our Behavior, Health, and Wellness Teams, restorative practices, uh, relationship building, uh, mental health first aid, um, positive identity and peer relationships, relationship building, staff mental health. Package two really focuses on, um, really immediate response, uh, triaging, immediate active threat, uh, extreme violence, um, the list is here, so it talks about recommendations into those areas. Uh, again, this is the same slide, but it's, um, detailed in the response in the January two thousand and twenty-three. I didn't want to replicate all of the slides that, uh, were already there in existence, and again, we've linked those for you, but how those, um, package responses are then, um, being, um, activated within the district and how we're addressing the, the recommendations from the report. A little bit of, there's been a lot of cost information that we've shared about what is the cost of YSOs, uh, you know, in the, in the budget part of the district. Here is a, a breakdown of the costs, and now, these are, um, this year's costs, uh, so the, the, who bears the cost for the city of, of Beaverton YSOs? What the number of YSOs per agency, uh, goes through Washington County, the, the total agency cost, and then, uh, what the district future cost is. I will say a caveat, uh, to those costs is, there is a cost increase, a ten percent increase, uh, per year of the agreement until we reach a forty percent cost sharing, uh, with, uh, the city of Beaverton. So, the seven hundred and fifty number for this year, uh, will be ten, would be ten percent more next year, and would be ten percent more the following year. This year is at the twenty percent level. Um, so, that's just, uh, uh, some information, uh, that we were asked, and, uh, we dug into and found a, a little bit more information about, uh, this year's costs versus future costs. Um, the timeline for contracts, both, uh, terms end, uh, at the end of this school year, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and, uh, part of our agreement, uh, our written agreement with our law enforcement partners is, um, requiring a sixty-day notice. So, I wanted, we wanted to put the date on that so we could have, uh, conversations and let our partners know, uh, whatever the outcome is, uh, so there's plenty of time to potentially adapt or revise however the direction of, of the board goes, um, with these existing contracts now. Um, next steps is something that Dr. Valderras talked about. We've outlined a couple of them, just about the renewal, the potential renew of contracts, uh, direction from the board on what is the wish, uh, the direction of the board, and then looking at, um, a, a decision-making process, and interested in studying these things to gather more information, uh, move forward, uh, really looking for some direction on, um, the staff-level involvement of what the next steps are.
Okay, so the, the goal here is, is to be able to provide some high-level information out of the board, has, has reviewed these documents in the past, but also is, in December, come back to the board and give it a month, and also provide the board an opportunity to, uh, ask questions of staff, before we get clear directions of board in terms of what direction you want me to head, in terms of doing a deeper dive and, and having staff do more surveying of current kids, current families, or does the board have enough information? I just want clear direction to be able to spend ta- staff time to be able to dig a little deeper in terms of before the board makes a decision, um, in the spring regarding the renewal of the YSO contracts.
Uh, yeah, this will be a time for questions.
So, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate that. Um, I know it's important to say that the city of Beaverton was part of the, the, um, the contract discussions and, uh, the, I can't even remember the name of the Sea Change.
The Sea Change, yeah, report, yeah.
Yeah, um, I think that's important to note that. But my question is a clarifying question. So, our job in December is to kind of, kind of evaluate what's happening, what we'd like to see happen, starting in January, in terms of how we proceed towards whether or not we're gonna have a contract with the city of Beaverton. Um, so, I'm just trying to understand, because you're doing your own negotiations at some point with the city of Beaverton, is that, does that start in January, or is there a timeline with that? Are you doing it now, and?
I think, um, from my perspective, we would, we would wait to hold those discussions until we got more clear direction, um, from the board, um, as we get closer to that May first deadline. I think, uh, one of, of, of the things to keep in mind is, there are, um, there, there is a process that we can develop to, again, gather more current information about, um, today's staff, students, community, um, how we gather additional information from, one of the things to keep in mind is, we gathered a lot of this information, and, and it's in the Sea Change Report. One of the things that we haven't, um, done is, once the district responded to the Sea Change Report, to address, um, their recommendations, there hasn't been, uh, any kind of a process to gather information now that we are in the process of, of implementing those recommendations, um, if there's any ch- change, uh, for the positive or otherwise, um, from that report that was pretty comprehensive at the time.
So, I have another question too, because it's potential, I mean, costs go up, and so, costs of this program would go up as well. So, the amount that we see there, a million dollars or what, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand cost, and it's gonna go up twenty percent, is it potentially higher because costs are going up in general?
I think there's always a potential with that. One of the things that was written into, uh, the IGA with the city of Beaverton is the forty percent cap at this time. I'm not, we can't speculate necessarily on what they may come back and say, here, are real costs or this, and the, the partnership, but we have it written in, should the, uh, contract continue, what those costs will be in twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven. So, that would, there would be an extension of the agreement should we move forward with that. So, we, we kind of have an idea of the percentage, not the actual cost, uh, of what the program will be for those next two years, if that makes sense.
Ugana.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your, um, presentation. So, my question is around getting more, um, current information, because I do see that the survey we have, we have a two thousand and twenty survey, and then we have a two thousand and twenty-two. Um, how do you intend to obtain more current information? Are you planning on getting more surveys from current teachers, staff? Are you planning on getting more surveys from current teachers, staff and, and parents? How other, do you have other means of getting information other than the surveys?
Yeah, well, um, Dr. Baldair is correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the, the, uh, items for discussion for night, tonight and going into December is do you want the district to come back to the board with a process that outlines all of those things on how we would get, gather that information? So we haven't started that. It's, it is a, a pretty significant lift, so I think we want to make sure that there is, uh, interest from the board to go through a process. And what we would do is, um, gather that, um, information and present how we would go about obtaining those. I certainly would think, um, significant amount of, uh, community outreach, survey, uh, all of those traditional things, um, uh, that we would do to reach out to, uh, as broad of a group as we can in our community.
I mean, it would be nice to know how our current students feel about this program because what we have now, it's outdated surveys. Um, we don't even know if those students are still in our district or not. So it would be nice to know how our district body, our students and staff are feeling about this program currently today as of, you know, something more recent. I would love to see that, see how they feel about it. Thank you so much.
Uh, Selena and Tammy.
Thank you, Casey. From going to schools, high school, talking to principals, talking to teachers, I've only heard good things about YSO program, uh, their positive feedback. Every school I have visited and I've visited one, at least one or two schools every month and they only speak positive things, but our costs are going up, so. And one of the things when we applied the C Change recommendations, the role of the YSO changed where, um, the school were reaching out to the YSOs for, uh, restricted, um, reasons. And I would be interested in finding out how the role changed, how the, um, what, what the opinions of, other than the administrators, maybe if we can get student opinions and stuff, because there was a 30% who were not happy with having a YSO. So what could we apply as a school safety alternative model to? But, uh, the positive feedback is just really good, you know, like I ca- I can't think of taking them away from schools at this time with the current model that we have because I've only heard good things about them.
I think the 30% you're referring to is maybe the undecided or unknown, uh, based on.
15%, I think.
15, yeah.
Was undecided, but there were some, were, um, there was some negative feedback too.
Yeah.
So if we, if we can find out the people who did have negative feedback, are they happy now with the changed model? What has changed? Because it would be nice to get that feedback too. And I don't know how much cost that would be on the district to get that kind of information back, but it would be nice. And if we are negotiating the contract, can we get the 750,000 either, you know, down or not 10%? And if, if we get it down, can we use that money for alternative models in the school and make sure that all of our students are taken care of?
Okay.
Thanks.
Tammy?
Thank you. Um, thanks, Casey. I'm not opposed to getting new information. Um, I don't want us to slow down progress and change, um, to wait for new information, so I'm, I'm open to the idea. Um, and, um, I know we presented, you presented a, a limited view of the, both of those reports. Um, and those were the aggregate responses and I think it's really important to provide context, um, when those are broken down. Um, 21% of black students, 17% of students with disabilities, 19% of non-binary and 17% of LGBTQIA students were opposed, um, to having SROs in schools. More parents of black students, 29%, um, 34% of parents of non-binary students and 24% of, um, parents of LGD, LGBTQIA students, um, opposed having SROs in school. So I think, um, when we are always, I think in every decision we make trying to center equity, I think it's really important for us to look at those numbers, um, and, and think about those students most marginalized and those students most impacted negatively by SROs and, and they're the ones telling us that, um, for the most part, um, they feel uncomfortable. Um, and, and I think we should, should center that, um, as we're thinking about, um, how we want to think about safety in school. And I think underlying, um, the, the SRO program is that we want to address, um, our community, um, feeling safe in our school environment. And the, the tool we have right now, one of the tools is the SRO program, is that the only possible tool? If we were to consider, um, thinking about alternatives, you know, what if we didn't have an SRO program? What would our system of safety look like? And so I would really like to explore that. And I know that's one of the options that, that you all presented is school safety alternative models. You know, what would be an alternative to having an armed, um, police officer in our learning environment? So I'm really interested, um, in, in exploring that. Um, the other interesting thing, and I, um, I know that part of the, um, IGA with the Beaverton Police Department was, um, new reporting. And I, I know you're nodding because I asked this question, um, and I, and I just refreshed the page.
Yeah.
We have one quarter of reporting available to us and I, I'm really disappointed in that, um, and, and think that that is a huge problem. And if we're looking for, to have, you know, oversight of this program and for this program to be accountable to the community, um, without us having access to the data and, and maybe you have an answer for that, but, um, it's.
I, I don't, but I, I do want to thank you for bringing that to our attention because it is housed on the, um, the, the Beaverton Police website, uh, where that information is. And we did contact them, uh, when, when we were able to get into the question. I haven't received work back yet, but, uh, as soon as we do, uh, I'm sure they'll address that and we can get that, uh, uh, updated, um, as soon as we can and get some information to the board about that.
Perfect, thank you. And then just the last thing, um, to circle back to what I said at the beginning is, you know, the, this C Change report was really comprehensive and I want to applaud the authors, um, that worked really hard and all the community that participated. Um, and I guess the, um, the one question that is in my mind lingering is, um, the district's response to the report. And, um, as far as I know, and I didn't see anywhere in that response to the report, that they included, um, the Office of Equity Inclusion and Inclusion, um, as a, have a person having a seat at that table. Um, as far as I know, they didn't consult the Equity Advisory Community Committee. Um, and, um, just to be frank, uh, as far as I can tell, um, all of the, the folks that were at the table writing the district's response to their, that report were white people or at least people that appeared to be white to me, um, and then our district's police officers. So, um, I just, you know, the end product might have been great and I think we can evaluate, um, how the program has changed, um, based on the district's response to the report and I'm open to that. And I just want to put a little pin in the idea that, you know, I, there might not have been enough people at the table to weigh in on how the district should respond. So, um, just, just wanted to put a pin in that because I thought the C Change report was really good. Thank you.
Well, yeah, thanks for that information.
Thank you, Tammy. Melissa, did you have any comments you wanted to add? Uh, well, speaking for myself, um, and, uh, one, and Dr. Baldair is, Dr. Perez isn't here, part of our hope tonight was to set up the structure so we could make the series of decisions that we need to make about this program from the, one, if there's going to be a change, that we have the time to make those changes, that we can incorporate those ideas, uh, whatever those changes may be, that we can honor the timeline that we would need if we need to make modifications or other changes to the agreement, that again, we would have the time to do that and it wouldn't become something that we're dealing with in the last two months of a budget cycle, um, which doesn't please anyone or, and also is fully ineffective. Um, so I just wanted to share that with the board and for the community's benefit. So a part of this space is to make sure we have information so board leadership can make sure we craft the right pieces so that our meeting next month is effective on this issue and, and give, can give, uh, Superintendent Baldair's direction on what to do. And then you can let me know if I'm Mr. Beat there. Uh, my own comments to share, uh, on this is, uh, and I will speak personally to my personal experience, uh, here and abroad. Um, relationship with law enforcement is very complicated for me. Uh, my prior professional life, I worked directly with law enforcement around public safety issues related to clients that I served and their families. Um, on the other hand, I'm also a parent, um, in this district, uh, who worried about the wellbeing of my own students when they're, they've graduated now, so their day-to-day is different, um, but just saying historically. Um, also knowing the, the day-to-day role that officers are having in the building, uh, the incidental contacts that they have with students, these are the things that bubble to the surface for me, um, and wanting to stay in our lane as board members around, you know, structure and policy and the direction that we give, uh, the superintendent and the administration to, to meet the, 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 what's needed, uh, for our schools to be effective. There's a lot here, uh, and I encourage in our conversation about this, um, I think some form of new information would be useful and should be, um, a part of the process. I think it's hard to evaluate how this is going without some way to know what people think. Um, what exact, I, I, it's not my decision right now to say exactly what that, way to do that is, but I think that needs to be a part of an evaluation process. My understanding from the original agreement before we came on the board was that this would be reviewed at this time and then I think the cycle is at least intended to be every two years to renew or some set interval. And I think a, a, a robust way for community to have a voice in this because with something that's complicated, although the number of folks who are just clearly like, I don't want to be in proximity to an officer, maybe small, I don't think it's, um, reasonable to just discount their concern, right? Um, those who may be ambiguous, you know, kind of not sure, not sure how they feel. Again, and then those who may be most adamant that it has to be there. Everyone's, as, as I've experienced, um, and I live and work in a professional practice of joint accountability, everyone's input is important to a positive outcome. So I think us having a good structure that honors, um, the concerns of those who may be in a, in a small group but may have an outsized experience, um, to those who may, again, it's a day, it's just an innocuous experience, they don't feel the tension or presence, it doesn't show up for them and I can respect that. Um, and then there's always the piece to be, and I've stated when we had this discussion, um, last year, cost. Um, I think cost for us is really important and the conversation of work that would be a part of good public safety work outside of us as a school, school district, I'm discomforted by the idea that we have to, like, you know, we, 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 as me, when I'm not on the school board, I'm also a taxpayer, contributes to the cost for public safety in our region and then through another body contributes to the place for public safety in my region. As a board member, it makes me a little uncomfortable. I can understand because I know budgets are complicated, like having a detailed conversation about that, but I think it's our responsibility to make sure we have a, we just, we explore other options that may, um, make sure we're getting the best use of our resources for the things that we have to do as a school board, um, that, you know, we might do in partnership with others. Um, so those are my thoughts that I wanted to get, um, into the space on what to do, um, you know, in terms of this issue and to make sure we have a thing structured well for the next time we meet on this. Any other comments?
One thing that, you know, by talking to the principals and superintendent, one differentiation that came about again and again is having a relationship with a YSO who comes in and having a constant relationship, who knows the kids, makes a big difference than just making a call when there is a physical threat to a 911 number. It's, it's a very different scenario. So having that relationship is worth it for them and, um, what other opt- alternatives we have, I mean, no matter whichever way we go, if there is a, a physical threat or to the school or the staff, to the students or the staff, we will have to call 911, the law enforcement will have to be brought in. But that, that relationship with one person who comes in or who knows the, uh, principal or the staff in the school and the students and having a, a person just from a 911 number is very different. So, thanks.
So I think I have clarity from the board and I appreciate the conversation. Look forward to the conversation next month and future conversations. And again, we're always open for, uh, for the board to ask questions of staff as well, um, in between meetings, but I think I'm hearing, getting more information, do surveys and I would not want to have our internal staff do a survey. I want a third party to come in this, that, uh, that we can present to the board for consideration if, if, if possible, and then I'll work with leadership maybe on that as we plan, uh, the next meeting. Is that okay?
That sounds good. So, thank you. Uh, the November 12th, 2024 work session of the Beaverton School Board is hereby adjourned at 6:59. Gonna get started. I call to order the business meeting of the Beaverton School Board on November 12th, 2024 at 7:03 PM. Six school board members are present. Board Chair Karen Perez is excused due to a death in her family. Our food, our four student representatives are here as well. Bienvenidos and welcome. Uh, so present are Susan Greenberg, Dr. Melissa Potter, Selena Gard, Ugana Inyanyaya, myself, Justice Raji, Dr. Kami Parpenter, uh, our students, Sahas Khanganti, uh, Tasya Ahmed, Tasya, make sure I get it right. Tasya, thank you. Uh, Eric Vargas and Safa Said. Got it, awesome. Uh, I want to note that, uh, there are some new audience procedures in place for our board meeting. Last month, um, the audience turnout was more than capacity of the boardroom, so some new things are in place to provide access and follow fire safety code. We have increased seating in the boardroom to 173 seats and have staff in place to monitor the entry and limit the number of people who come in, uh, to not, the number of seats available. If more people want to attend, there are seats for, we have a large space set up in the room next door where overflow audience members can view the meeting on large video monitors. This room, um, space, or, uh, pardon me, this room has space for another 215 people. If the capacity of both rooms is filled, any remaining audience members will be asked to wait in the parking lot and they can watch the meeting live stream on their personal devices. Uh, there is no change in our protocols for public comment. Uh, community members may request in advance to provide comments virtually or request to provide comments in person. to provide comments in person prior to the start of the meeting. If a public commenter is not one of the 173 members in the boardroom, we will call them to the boardroom at the time for their public comment. There is more information about these changes on the district website, and we appreciate everyone who is interested in observing meetings of the board. Now we will start our meeting with our land acknowledgement, which board member Sunita Guard will give this month. Sunita?
Thank you. Beaverton School District rests upon the traditional sites of the Tuolitan Kalapuya people. We recognize we are not the first teachers, learners, or community of on this land. Oregon has nine federally recognized tribes, and our district serves many students who identify as American Indian Alaska Native. We recognize tribal communities continue to face the ongoing impacts of colonization. Therefore, we commit to the following actions. We will provide needed support to American Indian Alaska Native students and families. We will openly and honestly examine our assumptions and actions in order to confront stereotypes, misconceptions, and lack of knowledge. We will elevate voices and experiences of American Indian Alaskan Native peoples, both past and present, through robust professional development. We will ensure our curriculum and instructional practices teach the history, traditions, cultures, and contemporary lives of the tribes of Oregon. It is the intention of the Beaverton School Board that our actions build and strengthen relationships with our indigenous students, Native communities, and tribal partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunita. We will now move on to review the agenda. Board members, if anyone wants to propose making a change to the agenda or pull an item out of the consent agenda, this is the time to do so. Are there any changes to the agenda anyone would like to request?
I want to pull out one of the contracts, the one with the turf field.
All right, and that is.
The Beaverton High School turf replays.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Item, the item is removed from the consent agenda and will be addressed separately after voting on the rest of the consent agenda. To explain, the consent agenda is a group of items for action that are voted on as a slate rather than one by one. These items are not expected to need any discussion. They are routine business that has already been discussed. The board approves a vote to consent agenda as a package with no discussion. And having the one item, we will move forward and, so someone needs to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Sorry. I have it. Sorry about that. I didn't realize you were doing the consent agenda before we do reports out. It's a different one, okay. I move to approve the consent agenda as submitted with the.
Just approve the.
Oh, I move to approve the agenda, okay, that's a whole do.
Yeah.
I second it.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Pardon me, let me get to where we are on the, did we miss a beat? The motion to revise the agenda to remove the one item passed unanimously with all board members present voting yes. Okay. And pardon me, all right, now we will, we will go to our community presentations and recognitions, and we have with us the South Ridge Mariachi Band. So please come to the front, sorry.
Caballitos marchando van, caballitos en desfile. Paso, 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 paso. Los cinetes se sientan felices, los cinetes se sientan felices. Caballitos marchando van, los cinetes se sientan felices.
Yeah, can we take a photo? Thank you so much again to the South Ridge Mariachi Band, getting out to a great new Next, we have Transportation Director of the Year. Craig, will you please come up to the presenters' table? Congratulations to Craig Beaver, BSD Administrator for Transportation, for being named School Transportation News 2024 Transportation Director of the Year. Craig is a continuous learner and a true trailblazer, leading the charge in clean-fueled electric bus bus implementation while keeping a strong focus on teamwork and hands-on leadership. His commitment to rolling up his sleeves and engaging directly with the day-to-day challenges has inspired those around him. Thank you, Craig, for setting the standard in school transportation and leading with both vision and heart. Craig, would you like to say a few words about the award and your work?
Thank you very much, board members, Dr. Valderras. I'm humbled and honored to receive the award, the national award. It's a lot of hard work, and very thankful for the support of senior leadership and the board in all of our ventures over the last 10 years here. I'm very fortunate to work with such a talented team and such wonderful drivers, and I just want to say thank you very much again for your continued support, and we look forward to continuing our path. We have about half of our electric buses in service right now, 42, and we're expecting about another 40 over the next three or four months, and we're embarking on adding more chargers as we go, and we'll have the largest electric fleet that definitely Pacific Northwest and within the top 10 in the nation. So we're very excited, so thank you for your support.
Thank you, Craig. We will now move to our next agenda item, the superintendent's report. Dr. Valderras?
Thank you, and I appreciate the Mariachi Band. I know this was an effort that we had when they first arrived, is try to have more multicultural experiences for our youth, and Mariachi is one. Hope to have others such as taiko drumming and others. Again, we're a very diverse community, about 60% of our kids are kids from diverse backgrounds, and and it's just not the language, it's the culture. So how do we bring in the culture from different communities into our classrooms to meet the needs of our of our kids and our broader community? And to Craig Beaver, you know, you're very humble, you know, when he says one of the top 10. We're a mid-sized district compared to many in the U.S. Many districts are very, very large, somewhere over 200,000, 300,000, we're 40,000 or 38. And to do what he's done in quick order and be a national leader, you well-deserve recognition to you and the entire staff, our drivers, everybody that makes up our transportation department, just done a phenomenal job up here in Beaverton, so kudos to you. One, we'll talk about the election. Every election brings out different feelings in communities, and this election is no different. There's possible potential shifts coming from Washington, D.C., based on what has been stated publicly by candidates. In the area of education, there's been talk of expansion of school vouchers nationwide. Also been reduction of Title I, II, and III funding that continues to support our public schools and our kids most in need. There's been a push by Republican House to proposals. The Republican House has proposed elimination of all Title, Title II and III, and reduction of Title I by 25%. That was put off this past time around in D.C. I know we pushed hard lobbying in D.C. to keep this funding that helps protect our schools. E-Rate, that's something that's also been talked about, reduction of the $9 billion that supports Universal Service Fund that provides technology services and Wi-Fi expansion in our schools and communities. I know something that Steve Langford also is passionate about and also advocates and lobbies in D.C. about this as well. It's a big chunk of change when it supports our public schools, also impacts on Title IX and many other programs. So that's always top of mind when these things happen, and I'd be remiss to not talk about the threats of mass deportations in this, in our communities. I personally experienced this in Eugene, Oregon, when I was superintendent in 2016, and the fear and trauma that caused the community, it caused fear and trauma in our community. We lost enrollment of our Latino families. We saw ICE around the neighborhoods and markets, we had reports of that, and that's a fear, that's a real fear for our communities. You know, again, we're a very diverse community, and there's, and this is an actual fear. We will work hard with our Department of Ed to support, to have structures to support for our families. We'll work hard with the city of Beaverton and Washington County here locally to do the best we can to make sure that our kids are safe, because our kids are safest in our public schools. Our kids are safest in our public schools. We'll continue to support this incredibly diverse community that makes Beaverton so special. Our kids, again, are safest in our public schools, and I just appreciate everything they they do, that our staff do each and every day to support our kids, and we will group up as a staff and be prepared to do what we can here in Beaverton, and I'll keep the board abreast of that. And also, we will begin mediation with our BEA partners on November 22 to look forward to bargaining every open article as we work toward a speedy resolution as we continue to, again, do what we can with the budget that we do have. We do have a budget that's going to be proposed by our governor the first week of December, and I hope it is 11-3, and because that's what we need to keep everything going. And again, that's that's something that, as a long session begins in January, we need to continue to to push and lobby for that, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valderras. The next item on our agenda is public comments. We will start with comments from our employee group leaders, starting with OSEA and then BEA, so you can please come up. Following employee group leaders will be comments from our community. And. So we, it means I find many either goes first, so Lindsey Ray?
Yes, is that all right?
No, that's fine. I just wanted to check. All right, so when, so when you're ready, you can begin.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Thanks, y'all. Yes. Am I on? Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Good evening, Superintendent Valderras, Board Vice Chair Raji threw me for a loop there, and members of the school board, including our student representatives. For the record, my name is Lindsey Ray. I'm a high school math teacher currently serving as the president of the Beaverton Education Association. This evening, being held behind me, we are presenting you with a petition that has been signed by more than 2,200 certified educators and over 1,200 community members. The crux of the petition is simple. Beaverton students and educators deserve better, and we are all ready to fight for the schools that our students, our educators, and our community deserve. The thousands of people who sign this petition did so with a commitment to take action alongside the BEA bargaining team as we fight for these issues at the table. First and foremost, we demand safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environments. Educators' working conditions are our students' learning conditions. We demand schools that are physically comfortable and conducive to learning, schools that provide structure and support for students who are dysregulated, and schools in which educators have the resources and the trust that they need to serve all of our students. That includes allowing educators the freedom to use their professional judgment in determining what will best support their students' growth and learning and to design and to design lessons and adapt our teaching to meet the unique needs of every student. This directly impacts educators' ability to create learning environments where we, where every child feels supported and safe. The district has a responsibility to ensure that we have resources to address student needs swiftly and effectively, and we intend to hold district leadership accountable. We're also here to demand professional respect, transparency, accountability, and shared decision-making. Beaverton educators are highly qualified professionals who work directly with the students from our community every day, and our expertise and our experience matter. This means that we must have protected, member-directed work and planned time for all members, including elementary specialists and counselors. Greater transparency, accountability, and shared decision-making are not just nice to have. They lead to better outcomes for students, educators, and families alike. We need authentic opportunities to engage in the decisions that impact educators, students, and families every single day. It's time to prioritize meaningful collaboration to build schools that we can all believe in. And third, we demand a commitment to retention and recruitment to attract and keep highly qualified educators in Beaverton. Our compensation and benefits must remain competitive. Inflation has eroded our take-home pay while healthcare costs continue to climb and coverage declines. We know that the health and well-being of educators directly impacts their performance, which in turn affects our students. In addition, we know that our students thrive if educators want to stay and can afford to stay in this district. If we want the best educators in front of our students, we need the district to commit to offering wages and benefits that reflect both the rising costs of living and the value that educators bring to this community. Every single person who has signed this petition is ready to stand up for the values that define Beaverton. We are united with our bargaining team in saying that these priorities, safe learning conditions, professional respect, and competitive compensation are not negotiable. They are essential to fulfilling the promises that we made to students and to building a school system that truly reflects our community's needs and aspirations. Board members, we need you to step up and be a part of this solution. Listen to the voices of Beaverton educators, students, and community members, all who have signed this petition. These are our classrooms, our schools, and our community, and together, we need to be ready to take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey Ray. Kirsty Sakman, OSEA.
Good evening. Sorry about the mix-up, but almost always Lindsey goes first. Good evening, Justice Gustavo, members of the school board and to the community. My name is Kirsty Sakman. I am a Para III Rover for Special Education, and I am the OSEA President-elect. We as Beaverton OSEA stand up for what we believe our community needs, which means that we back Lindsey, Katie, and our BEA union siblings in the solidarity as they continue to meet the negotiations and heading into mediation with our district. I could say a lot of things, but I think that Lindsey says it best, so I'll leave it to her. We as OSEA also show up and stand in solidarity with our multiple other districts in Oregon who are now actively, excuse me, striking, as well as some of our other very valued community members and business partners that are also actively striking and bargaining. I struggle at this point in the year on where to point my needle of attention, because there are a lot of layers. I am the President-elect for over 2,000 classified employees, which, in my own bias, but also in what I hear from others, classified staff are the glue of our district. Without the staff that I represent, our educators and our admin, yes, they're important and they're amazing, but they couldn't even begin to do what they do without the glue that is the classified staff I represent. If I say the terms DPSSST, Specialized Program, BSP, Planned Ignore, IFSP, ACE, Inclusion Models, Asbestos Certification, Athletic Emergency Action Plan, ECCP, Forklift Aerial Life Training, Operation School Bill, ISC, Raptor, CDL, Synergy, OSHA, ORO, Narcan, Vector, Safety Care, and an endless number of more that I won't make you wait for me to list. Do many of you have any idea of what any of those acronyms or titles mean? Because I can promise you that majority of our classified staff in Beaverton specifically know exactly what those trainings, certifications, or classes mean. These titles and names are specific to certifications to work in our buildings, names of plans we use to support students in our buildings, or the titles of classrooms or job positions in our over 138 different classified positions. These are all professional titles, acronyms, and certifications that our classified staff need to every day do their job. I forever will never get tired of reminding everyone that classified staff are the people's business. We support the people that are the adults, whether it be the fellow educators we work with, our classified peers, our admin, our certified teachers, as well as all of the parents, adopted family, and so on of the community, as well as all of our students, and just the basic needs of ourselves. There are so many different intricacies of being in the people's business. And I don't care if my bias makes you believe that I'm wrong. I know I might. My classified staff, and I'm going to call them mine, my classified staff truly understand the deep dives of a people's business. We do it top to bottom, inside out, and everything that you don't even think about. Hence, all of those titles that I'm, we'd be willing to put a bet on. Even everyone at this table couldn't tell you the exact definition of every acronym I just named, which is okay. That's why my classified staff matter, because they know, and they support, they show up, and they keep doing. I need more people to pay attention. I need more people to not just listen to when I come to the school meeting and have a lot to say. I need you to deep dive. I need you to look into it. What does it mean? What do our staff do? Because the dedicated work of our staff, so much is about the success of our students and our community. I could talk about this forever, but I digress, and I will go back to. We in OSEA have heard a lot about the struggle, about the reality of how do we get our DAO and our school board members out into our buildings, engaging with our staff, being part of seeing the great and quality work that classified staff are doing. I don't doubt that admin and certified are doing great work, but their work is on a very level playing field. Again, I don't discredit all of the details they do. But in our classification, it's such an intricate roller coaster that I'm confused why it's so hard to mention the name of one of our programs to a school board member and have them look at me in confusion. In my opinion, if you're representing our district, then the basic understanding of each individual title of one of our specialized programs, to me, seems like a no-brainer. But I recognize there's too much to know. So with that, I ask that each one of our school board members, as well as dedicated DAO staff, continue to make the efforts to look for the people who are underneath, doing the hard work, the ones that are always shining, the job titles that aren't always at the top of the list, but making time to make efforts to show up to our buildings. And I hope that anyone that might be the one giving the permission recognizes the need for the permission, that all of our community members, especially on our school board and at our DAO, as our DAO staff, are able to come in and see the dedicated and specific work and the amazing work that that leads to and the successes and the glory and the small and large moments that means for our students. This year has already been so much. It's mid-November. We're about three months into our school year. And yet, the continued story I hear, not because of the election, not because of the rain and the early dark, but because of the level of work, we're spring-tired, and we haven't even had fall break. I would remind and ask that all of our staff, and I'm going to give an extra shout-out to my classified, we take the time to recharge, drink your water, remember your silly whys and important whys, and to keep moving forward. We have been hiring a lot of staff, which has been helpful, because we have a lot of open positions. But a continued reminder that training and support to our staff are the key to the retention and longevity of our quality and dedicated staff that our peers and our students so deserve. We need to do better. We need to stay awake and stay present in the situations that are happening. We stand in solidarity with our partners, with our district, and most of all, with our students. OSEA is looking forward to meeting at the bargaining table beginning February 2025, and we ask all of our classified and certified colleagues alike to pay attention and continue showing up in solidarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsty. It is now time to hear comments from our community. As a reminder, this is a time when members of the public can comment to the board, and the board will actively listen, but will not be responding or answering any questions. We appreciate you being here today. The board welcomes comments virtually or in person from up to 10 people who sign up before the meeting. And more than 10 people request to speak. Priorities given to students, district residents, speakers who have not already provided public comment during a recent meeting, and a variety of topics. Comments can also be submitted in writing. We received four requests to provide public comment tonight, three in person and one online. The four speakers will be Helen Chandler, Val Helm, Rory White, and finally, Viasun Christine Nepper. As I said earlier, if one of the persons, speakers, is not named, is not in the boardroom, please make your way to the room, but I believe they're all here. Only the people named will be allowed to speak. Each speaker will have up to two minutes to share your thoughts. Your time cannot be shared or given to another person. You have a timer on the screen. When your two minutes are up, you must stop speaking and make way for the next person. Your microphone will be turned off if you go over. The school board does not hear complaints or charges against individuals. This means that we will end your testimony if you name a staff member, board member, or committee member by name in your testimony. Personnel matters and complaints should be resolved by communicating directly with the employee, their supervisor, or through the district complaint process found on the website. We ask everyone in attendance to model respectful behavior, and remember that we have students as well as staff, community, and community in here in person and watching online. Our first speaker is Helen Chandler. Please come up to the front table and take a seat in front of one of the microphones. And then Val Helm, you will follow, followed by Rory White. And if you're ready, you can begin.
Hello. My name is Helen Chandler. Teacher to 32 amazing fifth graders at Heighton Elementary and parent of kids that she feels...
Taking back those minutes later in the day, be pre-scheduled and approved. That's the autonomy we lose with language as simple as administrative approval. Should I start again? I sat with teachers collaborating on an academic night to bring families together in a celebration of learning. This planning comes from our Plan Minutes, a resource we use flexibly to meet student needs. We need to remember that in Beaverton, plan time has always counted differently than in other districts. A large bucket being used as a catch-all for time alone, collaboration, committees, and meetings. It's heartbreaking that this flexibility is being weaponized against teachers in these negotiations. I listened to a teacher share with the pride of a student who earned a special bead for making it through all the nights of outdoor school without going home. This bead, created by the teacher, wasn't derived from extra district PD. It came from the teacher's deep expertise, time, and care to help her students succeed. I hope the district bargaining team recognizes that teacher autonomy leads to job satisfaction and student success. There's no need to change how we use PD days, flex our time, or how we make in-the-moment curriculum choices. Tightening these areas won't improve outcomes. It will stifle our ability to meet students' needs creatively. Thank you for your time. Sorry it wasn't on. I was nervous.
No worries. Thank you, Helen. Val Helm?
Hello. I made my first QR code. Hopefully, it works. I'll put it up here. This way. Okay. Oh, thank you. Should I sit?
Yeah, and make sure whichever mic you use is green. So just press the button on the front there.
Hi, I'm Val Helm. I am a special education teacher at Mountainside High School. I am also a Beaverton community member, a taxpayer, and a voter. This is my third year of having both the joy of coaching and coordinating Unified Basketball and the frustration of there being no systems in place to support Unified at the district and often the building levels. Unified Sports is a proven model that brings together students with and without disabilities, allowing them to compete side by side and break down social barriers. However, the program could disappear without a reasonable stipend to attract and retain coaches. That would be a heartbreaking loss for our students, school, and communities. I'm asking you to take immediate action by providing funding for Unified Basketball at all six high schools. Here is how we can start. Post a Unified Basketball coaching position at each high school with a stipend that reflects the importance of the role. Consider adding a Unified PE class. Celebrate all athletes, including Unified Basketball players. Include them in school assemblies, sports events, yearbooks, and treat Unified Basketball as a legitimate, valued athletic sport. While many school districts nationwide, including Evergreen and Lake Oswego, recognize Unified Basketball as a legitimate sport, Beaverton, with only two volunteer-run teams, has yet to do so. We have the power to correct this inequity, but to do so, the district needs to recognize the value of this program and invest in its future. Eugene recently received an OSAA grant to bring Unified Sports to all five of its high schools. Oh, is that my time?
Yes, that's your time. Please... Yes, that's your time. Please, uh, submit your comments written also.
I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Rory White.
Timer's still running.
I'll grab it.
All right. All right, mic test. Okay, that's good. So hello, thank you for having me. I am Rory White. I'm a senior at base. I've been in the district my entire life. Um, today I would like to talk about the working conditions of Flex teachers. So under the previous contract that they had, I believe that most Flex teachers were able to do their Zoom classes remotely. But with no contract going into the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, it became mandatory for them to work in district buildings. And where they were initially moved, although somehow since moved to portables in other schools, was a former, or a storage building in the back of a maintenance facility. And this building was very small. All the workspaces were sort of crowded together, which made it very loud and hard to each voices were overlapping each other and could not hear their teachers talking. And and as far as I know, oh, this is situation and may not be fully resolved yet. Uh, and and why I want to bring this up is because, as as the B A mentioned, the condition that you give to teachers is what you give to students. If you give, if the teachers poor or working conditions, you give students poor earning environments. And if you give teachers poor resources, you give us poor resources. And so I'm asking you, I'm asking, and I know you hear everyone out there. I know you hear everybody who has been to the past two meeting. And so this meeting and and the meeting in October. Or if you can hear us, listen to us, 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 please make good compromises as on the contracts and the up and the upcoming agreements on the twenty-second, I believe. If just, all right, like I said, if you can and hear us, listen to us. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Rory. Next, we will go to Christine Napper on Zoom.
Good evening. My name is Christine Napper. This is my eighteenth year teaching at Woodford Middle School. And a lot has changed since I arrived here with degrees in teaching English language learners and special education. We used to offer services targeted these students' individual needs. But now those same students, as well as their teachers, are left floundering and failing with more services being removed all the time. The district ties this behind inappropriate misuse of the word inclusion. When I couldn't stomach the dismantling of E L D any longer, I switched to teaching social studies. That used to mean teaching one grade level, two preps, four classes, and about eighty students. Now it means teaching two grade levels, at least three preps, six classes, and about a hundred and fifty students. We used to have a school-based committee to design each year's schedule around the particular needs of our student body. But now we've thrown out the equity approach and replaced it with a one-size-fits-all schedule mandated to us from above. The current schedule stretches both students and teachers in too many directions, leaving us unable to do anything well. We used to have a monthly staff council meetings at our school where teachers and admin worked together to make plans and decisions. Now we get half big plans handed to us without any teacher input. I used to serve on a district advisory committee, helping leadership see beyond the walls of the district office. That committee was also disbanded. I'm working more and I'm working harder than ever before. But I'm working less effectively than before because of the bad district decisions steamrolling teacher voices again and again. I'm making less money than before, thanks to so-called cost of living adjustments that don't even keep up with inflation. And the district's contract proposals, including the cost-neutral proposals, do nothing to reverse any of those harmful trends. I don't pretend to know leadership's intentions, but I do know this. If I were trying to sabotage a school district, I would do nothing different than what's being done right now.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you all for your comments and thank you everyone for being here this evening. We will now move to our items for information. Our first item for information tonight is a spotlight on B S D's American Indian-Alaskan Native Education Program with Dr. Tashiko, uh, Mariseo, Mariseo, pardon me, and Jen Anderson and Jenny Sanchez. Mariseo.
All right. Sorry. Good evening, Vice Chair Justice Raji, Superintendent Dr. Valderas, board members, and student representatives. It's so nice to see students on the board. My name is Tashiko Marizio, Administrator for Multilingual Programs here in Beaverton. And with me tonight, and we have an amazing group of representatives of our American Indian-Alaska Native Program, and they will introduce themselves when they're when they're up to speak. Um, so we are so excited to be here tonight. Um, November is Native American Heritage Month, also American Indian-Alaska Native Heritage Month. Um, it is a time to recognize the rich diversity of indigenous peoples as well as their role in American society, their significant role in American society. And here in B S D, we are committed to ensuring that the learning of the history, the culture, and the contributions of inhabitants of our land are not just in November, but throughout the year. And I just want to share some examples of how we've done that. Um, so we have renamed a middle school from Timberland to Tunwata, which means waterfall in Chinookwawa. And we passed a resolution in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, we devise a comprehensive plan for implementing the state's required tribal history, shared history curriculum. We collaborated with local tribes to write our district land acknowledgement, focusing more on action rather than just words. And we collaborate with Terranova to plan and showcase native plants. We've incorporated Chinookwawa in our summer culture camps to support the re-divitalization of languages. And that's just to name a few of the things that we've done. Um, so I am going to actually pass it over to our team so they can highlight more of the current stuff that we've been doing as well as to share our future goals of the program. So I'm gonna pass it over to Jenny and Jen.
Hello, thank you. My name is Jenny Sanchez. Um, I just want to highlight some things that we are currently doing and working on right now in the district. Um, we are strengthening our community and our student growth by recruiting a lot of students. Um, we are working with our neighboring school districts such as Hillsborough School District, Portland Public School District, and Salem Kaiser School District and their Indian Ed programs. And that's how we're learning how they're recruiting to get more students, we're recruiting to get more students, the same way that they are doing that's going out to schools, visiting the students, as well as doing a lot of mailouts, um, reaching out to staff in all the schools and letting them know that we do have a list of students that identify as Native American, Alaska Native. Um, the other thing that we're doing is collaborating culturally, figuring out what cultural events are going on within our community and bringing it into our, into the school district and letting our kids be aware of like the events that are going on, not just in Beaverton, but all over Oregon.
Hello, Board. Um, Jen Anderson. Um, one of the main focuses that I've been working on and in carrying on work from Kainoa, who was previously in this position, um, is the implementation of tribal history, shared history. Um, so not only are we working on the professional development for our educators, for each teacher that's in the classroom, um, we're also collaborating between our content areas. Um, and we have found wonderful ways to embed these lessons in our scope and sequence for all content areas. So the O D E mandated lessons currently are being embedded. Um, on top of that, we are also making sure that we're getting the tribal lessons um, embedded in other grade levels as well. So the goal is to make sure that students are receiving tribal history, shared history at all grade levels prior to O D E releasing more lessons for more grade levels. So we're kind of trying to be ahead of the curve. And to kind of highlight also not only our lessons, but making sure that we're trying to have our culture seen within the school district, I want to turn it over to our communications, Tim and Shelley. So we at Terranova last week installed a mural to honor and celebrate the traditions and contributions of native peoples. The project was led by Gary Wesley, our former B S D American Indian-Alaska Native Program facilitator, uh, who's a member of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron. And it's a representation of the collective work of native students and families in our district.
So we, and we are going to hang a mural that was created last year. I think the students are really gonna love seeing it up. And also I think it's gonna be a great segue into students being able to ask questions.
The work that this school does to create art and to picture, to incorporate good artwork, to tell the story that they're already doing and the traditions that they're keeping alive, uh, to combine them both is is something that, um, that the students need.
He created the mural during one of our cultural events. So while he was creating the mural, we had students here also creating their own art. So they kind of went through the experience with him to see how he started with drawings and then added paint.
I think it's important to put culture in schools. It helps them have that self of belonging. It has, um, it makes teachers aware that we're still here, we still want to be recognized, and we want our cultural, our culture to be recognized and seen. So having a mural in schools, um, not only supports our students, but also supports our staff that identify as Native American.
Um, so that kind of shows where we're at now, um, but also we have future goals for our program.
Yeah, one of our future goals is to put more art in our schools that represent our students that identify as American Indian-Alaska Native, as well as bringing language into our school and such as Chinookwawa. And, um, making sure that they are not, and learning their language. So working and networking with, um, tribes all over the U S that represent like the students that identify in that tribe. So like if we have a tribal member that's Soletts, we would reach out to Soletts and utilize their language to help teach that student their language. If we have Oklahoma, we'll reach out to Choctaw Nation and work with them in implementing a language to help those students to learn the Choctaw language. Um, right now, a lot of our students, we have a large number of, uh, members from the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron. So we are able to work with them and helping them learn the language. And it's fun teaching them. I like seeing the little kids learn. So, yeah. Um, and then tonight we have one of our students here to talk about what we learned during Culture Camp.
Hi, my name's Hondo. I'm from Portland, Oregon. I go to Meadow Park Middle School. I'm eleven years old and I'm in Skogee Creek in Choctaw. My experience at Beaverton School District Culture Camp was amazing. I felt so connected with all the other native kids and teachers around me. Older or younger, I felt like I could talk to anyone. The great thing is that I made friends, but at the same time, I learned a lot about my native culture and our languages. Even after camp ended, I had a connection with everyone I met, and I kept the skills that I learned at camp with me. In the program, I've learned how to make a drum with other native families. I also learned how to plant trees, put up teepees, and do a salmon bake, and so much more. All of it while being fun, but also educational, and we all learn about our cultures. I appreciate having the opportunity to go out into nature and with native community members to learn more about the plants and the nature around me. I'm really glad that the Beaverton School District has this program to keep me connected to my culture. Madoff.
We also have our parent chairperson here to talk about, um, our PAC.
Hello, good evening. My name is Christina Parker. I am a citizen of the Chippewa Creek Tribe from Rocky Boy, Montana. I'm a mother to a high school, uh, senior at Mountainside High School, and I'm NAPEC president currently. Um, I I'm here to talk about how important this program is to not only our community, but the community as a whole, um, here in Beaverton. Um, we moved here, uh, when my son was entering second grade. And the program has played an integral part of, uh, my son's education, our community engagement, and just a part of our lives. Without this program, he would not have had the academic support, the resources he needed, and other, um, cultural engagement programs that has enriched our lives and our, um, son's life. Being a native parent, um, and of a native child, it's not always, um, you know, we're not always seen as being indigenous and also recognized as being indigenous and having the distinctive culture that is different from other persons of color here in our community. And this program has allowed, um, our community to get together. You've heard from our students, the ability to have cultural activities and events where we can gather and have a commonality is very special and a very important part of who we are. Um, I'm very, uh, excited about the new curriculum that's coming forward. And it's certainly, in my opinion, has been a long time coming. Um, but I'm I'm very optimistic that that will really be able to not only enrich our students' lives, but, uh, the community lives as well. Thank you.
So last Thursday, we had a cultural event where we gathered and I had over forty people show up. That's families, past students, um, past staff. Uh, they came together to create a quilt block. And on this quilt block, they talked about their tribe and their identity and how their identity ties into their culture. And so, um, Shelley will share the video.
So tonight we're doing the Culture Night for the Title VI for the Native American students and indigenous students. We are doing quilt blocks where kids can express like what culture means to them, what family means to them, and kind of like different things that happen in their tribe or what connects them to their tribe. Once it's all set and, um, and the quilt is put together, every kid that created a quilt block, I will be taking it out to their school where it will be hung for them to be able to share with their school community. It'll be great because then the students can see, as the quilt comes to their school, they can see their square and see, you know, be proud of their people and their heritage.
I got it here to celebrate my culture and what it feels like to be with my ancestors and family.
I think having the quilt in the schools, it also is so important because it lets the kids be seen and be heard. It lets them express their identity of their culture and just bring awareness.
So we can never forget who we are and what we are.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time. Um, we would also like to invite.
When I play, my brain is inspired by what I
We would also, um, like to, we made, um, their medicine wheel, yeah.
So these are medicine wheels. The circle represents inclusion. So you're including us into your
So you're including us into your, to your life. We're including you into our life. Colors represent the four seasons as well as your life process. So we were born as infants, then we go into teenage years, and then we go into adulthood, and then we become elders. So that's what our next Culture Night is going to be about. So we would like to invite you guys as a board to our next Culture Night in December to come and be part of our students and let them know that you guys are accepted. You guys see them and you hear them, and you want to be a part of that.
Okay. Okay, we'll make sure that the board has that information, has it on their calendar. Thank you, and we appreciate you sharing this with us. Thank you. Our next item for information, tonight is our report on our technology with Chief Information Officer Steve Langford.
Good evening, Vice Chair Regie, Superintendent Baldairis, members of the school board, and our student representatives. Thank you for the opportunity to share briefly the work of the Information Technology Department. You have the report in your packet. I'll mention three things briefly, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. The first update is an update on our ERP project, Enterprise Resource Planning. Our superintendent has rightly called this the backbone of a district. It is the application we use to pay staff, to purchase goods and services, and build a budget and a variety of other things that are critical to the functioning of a school district. Our current system is over 25 years old. And at the time it was put together, it became over time highly customized and a lot of manual processes that we needed to reevaluate. So we began about 18 months ago, that process of looking at how we use the system and thinking about ways we could do work differently. RFP has concluded. We selected PowerSchool, which is our current vendor, and we'll be moving to a cloud-based solution beginning very soon. Our kickoff meeting was in November. We, in December, will be having our first set of sessions to redesign general ledger and core financials. And our go-live hopefully will be October 25 for the business functions and June of 26 for the HR functions for the system. This work is done in collaboration with Human Resources, Business Office, and IT. And it is launched very well so far. So we're all looking forward to seeing processes change. I think it's going to give our staff time. It will allow automation to take care of some of the processes that are manual. So that will give our, the people who work in the system additional time, and it should provide a better experience for our staff who all use the system as users for a variety of reasons. The second update is our dark fiber project. We just finished Phase Two of the dark fiber project. It's a three-phased project to move to long-term leased dark fiber. And so Phase Two was the schools, Phase One was the high schools, which we did a number of years ago. Phase Two, what is the schools in the north half of the district? And Phase Three, our final phase, will be the schools in the southern half of the district. We have 19 schools to go, and we should be complete on that by March of 2025. And the reason this is so important for us, there's a number of them, but some of the most important reasons are it's going to reduce costs now and into the future. So if you think about every time schools need additional bandwidth, right now, our current strategy, we have to, there's an increased cost for that. By using dark fiber, which is just leasing fiber optic cable either underground or on telephone poles around the city, we can connect up our schools. And when we need increased bandwidth, we just replace the electronics on the ends. That is a substantial savings into the future. As schools continue to need more bandwidth, we'll be able to scale up the connectivity for very, very low cost for the next decade. And then finally, the Gen AI Advisory Committee. On Friday, we launched a call for participation. This is a collaboration with our Teaching and Learning Department, and we're going to be spending the winter and spring looking at how we can develop structures to responsibly use Gen AI applications for students and for staff. And this is very important because Gen AI used to be a place that you went to, like ChatGPT, for example. Gen AI now is moving into the applications that we all use. So it is important for us to be thinking about how we can learn to use that responsibly and how students can use that responsibly. So as they leave us, they're prepared for a future of work or higher education where they will be using these tools. So that work, that work will begin in January, and we look forward in the spring to having a deliverable guidebook for Gen AI tools. And then finally, I just want to recognize our IT staff. They're a dedicated team of professionals. Their technical knowledge is really, really deep, and we're fortunate to have them. And just as important, they understand why we do this work and the connection to the classroom and to student learning. And so I just want to take a moment and thank them for all their hard work that you see reflected in that report. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
This is a quick question. And first of all, thank you because backbone of this, you know, is a really important word to use for what your team does. Do it in kind of a silent mode, so no one sees. It's kind of stealth. And I have to say the dark, what's it called, dark?
Dark fiber.
Dark, it sounds kind of ominous. So I'm like, dark fiber? Does that mean we're going someplace bad? But I have a question about the chat, no, the AI committee. Is that an internal committee or is that an external committee?
Good question. The committee, we're seeking students, parents, staff from a variety of functions around the district. It will be looking for a lot of perspectives on the committee, including students. Yes.
For any students watching this, how do you apply to that committee?
There is an application on the BSD website. It's one of the tiles, and you can just click on that. There's a short form to fill out, and I believe it's open for at least another couple of weeks. Sunita.
Thank you. A lot of fun stuff you guys are doing. With the PowerSchool, the new technology, what will your training look like for the people? Because a lot of people will be impacted with it, right?
Yes, we will be utilizing the Train the Trainer model. So as we get closer to the launch of the financial side of the house in the spring, we're going to be training staff. PowerSchool will train our staff, and then our staff will be responsible for training the BSD staff needing to use it. And that training could look a little different. For example, someone maybe in the business office who, that is their primary application they're using for their work, will get training that might be different from a staff member saying that needs to go to the employee portal, right, to look at tax returns or the information we have there for them. But we will have training based, that will be tailored to the job roles.
The AI committee, what would be the output of that after they are done? Like, and how long will it be?
We're gonna, we're gonna start that process, the series of meetings in January. We hope to finish by March, April. The deliverable on that will be a guidebook that would describe responsible use for students and adults at BSD.
Thank you, Steve, for your presentation. For somebody who is technologically challenged like myself, you mentioned this is going to be cloud-based. And when you said that, can you elaborate more? What you mean by that?
Sure. Our current system is housed physically on servers that live in our data centers. And this new system is going to be housed on servers that are hosted, that live in PowerSchool's data centers. And that offers some advantages to us in terms of security, in terms of automating backups. Kind of taking care of the system will be, will look a little different. Tammy.
Thanks. My question's also about generative AI. And just reading from your report, it says in addition to accuracy, concerns over data privacy, copyright, and bias must be addressed. And I'm curious if those concerns are just inherent in generative AI and what the committee that you're proposing could possibly come up with in the form of a policy or guidelines or whatever that could overcome our concerns about data privacy, student data privacy. And, and what was the other one I said? And bias, you know, the, you know, my understanding, which is minimal, is that, you know, there is a fair bit of bias, cultural bias in generative AI. And so, you know, curious how a committee of smart people that come together could overcome that, those problems in this product that we're looking at.
That's a great question. And in addition to bias and inaccuracy, hallucinations are another big one. So the generative AI tools, if they, they're just designed to solve a problem, and if they can't, sometimes they invent a solution. So I think as the committee will have to explore those issues because they, all three of them are very real issues. And I think what we'll likely see is how can you use AI tools responsibly? So we're not going to be checking critical thinking, for example. We need to be, it might help with a first draft. Gen AI will never do a final draft. So I can't speak for where the committee's going to go, but I think we're going to have to explore those areas and determine ways that we can help people understand, our students and our staff, how to understand to use it responsibly. So we're checking for bias, we're checking for accuracy, and we're using tools that when we put stu, when we put data in, because I don't know if it will be student data, but as data goes into the system, it will not be used to train models, and so that information does not go out somewhere else.
That's really helpful. I was very curious about that. So that, all of the student information stays internal. It does not get propagated out into the universe to be then used to generate iterative additional stuff across the world. The BSD data stays here locally.
Yes.
Okay, great. I really like hearing that. And I consider myself a pretty big skeptic on this. Do you think that there's any chance that this committee could come to the end of the process and say, it's not ready for prime time. We're going to have to put this on the shelf? Or do you think this is going to happen and you're just coming up with guidelines for this new tool that's out there?
I think it's a fair question, and I think the committee's going to need to do that work and see where we go with that. I think a challenge with it, Gen AI, is, like I stated earlier, it's moving into the applications that we use. It's in our phones. And so the idea that it's an application you go to is starting to erode, and it's, like it or not, in what we're using. So I think it's, while the committee could explore many different paths, I think it's important for us to understand how it can be used responsibly.
Fair. And Siri has gotten dumber in the last couple of months, so just saying. Thank you.
BSD IT had nothing to do with that.
I had a couple of questions. Going back to AI, I was wondering how, so we see that AI is always like updated and is always developing. So I know if you're creating guidelines with those advisory committee next couple of months, how are these guidelines going to be continuously updated to as ChatGPT is evolving?
Yeah, I think that that's going to be something, the committee's, we're going to have to explore that because you're right, the tools are constantly evolving, and there's going to be new features released a year from now that we might not even be imagining. So we're going to need to make sure that we are not looking at a product that says this is how we will use Gen AI tools, if that's where we land. But we'll also need to look at a process by we reexamine our thinking and change our thinking as new tools are introduced.
Okay. And the other question that I had was, it's basically out of curiosity, but I see that there's a drop in like the primary usage of Chromebooks from middle school to high school. So I was wondering what the reason was.
In terms of students saying it's the primary computing device? Yeah, it's, there's a small drop, I think, between middle school and high school, but that, that usage pattern has been consistent for the last few years. And I'm not sure what to attribute it to. We didn't directly ask that question. But it just might be the availability of either phones or other devices. But that being said, those are, both numbers of middle school use and high school use of reporting the Chromebook as the primary computing device are very high in terms of students reporting this is how the device they're using to accomplish their learning. Thank you. Any one else have?
I just wanted to, first of all, kind of highlight how it's important to be teaching responsible use, like you highlighted, not just for students, but also for teachers and training teachers. And I was just wondering, how would that happen to be training teachers to use generative AI responsibly? And then also students who will, after high school, live with generative AI throughout college and throughout their life and their work? And I feel like how can we teach them responsible use?
That's a very good question. We've talked about this in our planning meetings for that team. As we explore creating guidelines, that deliverable then needs to be evaluated, and our teaching and learning colleagues will need to be looking at that to say, what impacts does that have on professional development, for example? So if we are thinking about coming up with ways that we can support Gen AI use, then we need to be working on developing resources for staff. But that would come after the guidelines are created.
I'm taken by how many comments and how many questions you're getting, and I doubt that our Division 22 compliance report will receive as much interest. And I think it's a reflection of all of our curiosities about this, the role all of this technology plays in our students' learning experience. My students, my young kids in school, some of the teachers have embraced it, use it, use it for drafts. Some have said, close the Chromebook, here is paper and pencil, right? And so how do we help our teachers know how to and when to? And how we help our students know how to and when to use the technology? So I appreciate this idea of a community coming together to collaborate. And your comment about how are we going to make guidelines be responsive? Because AI will not come at us any slower. Right now, it feels like it's coming fast, and it'll exponentially come at us faster and faster. So that idea of how do we really prepare our students and our staff and each other to be able to grapple with all of this is really exciting and a little unsettling because we just don't, I don't understand it fully to its full capacity either. So thank you for taking the time to explore it and to answer all of our questions because we're clearly interested and curious about what comes from the work group in a couple of months. So thank you so much.
So with that, I'll just add, thank you for your leadership on overall, but also on this, I think this is a really major issue for us as a district. But also on this, I think this is a really major issue for us as a district uh going forward. And especially with something that can produce something that looks like an answer, whether it actually is or not, uh is it really challenges your understanding of what's real and what's not. And so I think it's gonna be really, and I wanna make sure we um as leadership, make sure our community knows how to, you know, get involved if they wanna contribute to that conversation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, uh we have our annual report on aligning on student success, integrated programs um with Dr. Heather Cordy and Jill O'Neill.
Okay. Good evening, Superintendent Baldetis and Vice Chair Raji. Um board members and student representatives, it's it's wonderful to see you this evening and to be here with my colleague Jill O'Neill, who serves as an executive administrator in teaching and learning, to share with you um and present the integrated programs report. So um this is a little bit of a new process. Um you might remember in the past, we've come to you um to talk um about the student investment account. The student investment account is now one of of six components within the integrated programs report that Ms. O'Neill will be sharing more specifics with you about. One of the things um that that we would like you to think about as you're hearing this information um from Jill is is thinking about how our strategic plan is connected to this work. Or more notably, how this work connects to the strategic plan and how so many of the elements within the components um within the integrated programs really serves as the vehicle through which we um execute some of those goals and objectives. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. O'Neill.
Thank you, Dr. Cordy. As she said, tonight I'll be presenting the integrated programs report. And this is a new process, um beginning with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which is the report that we're doing now. Um ODE requires a report on the integrated programs. The report is available to the public. It's posted on our teaching and learning website. And it represents the closing of the twenty-three, twenty-four grants that were included in the integrated guidance. So the six programs that are included are high school success, the student investment account, continuous improvement planning, the career and technical education, Everyday Matters, and early indicators and intervention systems. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about each of those. The um high school success grant is a grant that's focused on improving graduation rates as well as college and career readiness for our students. It's restricted to high schools and eight point five, so second semester of eighth grade and then eighth grade summer school. The student investment account is focused on supporting the mental and behavioral health needs of our students, but also in reducing the disparities in outcomes, academic outcomes for our students. The third bullet that you see is the continuous improvement planning program. It is not a grant, but it's it's the framework for the integrated programs causing us to set goals and reflect on our progress towards those goals and make modifications as needed. Career and technical education is a federal grant. It's the Perkins Grant or CTE Grant. And it's focused on developing both academic knowledge, but also technical knowledge and employability, employability skills in our students, uh primarily at the high school level. Everyday Matters is another program that is not attached to a grant. And it's focused on addressing the chronic absenteeism that we're experiencing in our district and across the state by focusing on student engagement, school culture, um and teaching strategies as well as family involvement. The early indicator and intervention systems grant is focused on creating cohesive systems um across our district for the collection of data and using it to analyze and develop in interventions and supports for students. We, oops, I went backwards. So what do all these grants and programs do? The intention is that we are providing students with rigorous um experiences focused on accelerating the learning opportunities for students in every focal and demographic group. So not just for our students as a whole, but for um students who has store are from a population that has historically been underserved in our schools. We also are seeking to increase the number of students in our CTE programs of study um with a specific students on um focus on students who are underserved or underrepresented in our CTE programs. I think I skipped a slide, so I'm gonna go back. Uh we also are looking for increased graduation rates for students. Again, our student population as a whole and for student demographic groups. And we want students to feel like they belong at school and tell us that in line with our um mission behind to believe, belong, believe and achieve. And also, an intended outcome is a fully implemented K-12 multi-tiered system of support or MTSS, as you may hear here called, to meet not only the academic, but behavioral needs of our students. So in the reporting um requirement from the state, the district is expected to reflect on two questions in their report, and this is what's what's posted online. So the first question asks districts to discuss at least one outcome where we have seen progress in our implementation during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. But we've seen growth in several strategies, including preparing for this fall's implementation of universal screeners. Last year, there was a work group of educators who audited assessment tools that were being used in the school district and then recommended academic and behavioral universal screeners for implementation this fall. Another area of growth was in aligning our school improvement plans with BSD strategic plan. Each school created a goal related to safety and belonging. And each school developed strategies and monitoring tools to track students' sense of safety and belonging. Third grade reading proficiency is one of our longitudinal growth performance targets. And one of the strategies we implemented last year represented representing progress towards that target was the participation in letters training for over eighty educators. And letters stands for the language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling and is based on the science of reading. And our strategy was to increase the use of science of reading and research based practices in teaching reading to our early learners. The second question was to um discuss at least one outcome where we've seen challenges or barriers in implementation. And the response included the progress of eighty participants in letters training, which which shows progress. But also notes that in twenty-three, twenty-four, we did not yet have a K-five instructional materials selection based on the science of reading. Last May, you, the board, approved instructional materials that do meet that criteria. And we immediately began professional development to support a s- a strong implementation for this fall. That is our report. So now I welcome questions from you.
Susan.
So I have a clarifying question because when you were listing the six criteria that is in this report, you mentioned that um a couple of those were not attached to a grant, a couple of those criteria. Does that mean that there's no money that comes from the state to support those criteria? And so we are, we are carving out our own budget for those um requests?
I don't know if it's so much a criteria as a program, and it's a lens for us to look at the work we're doing. But there there's, it's not an unfunded mandate, I believe.
So but some of those that are mandated by the state are not necessarily their carve-outs aren't necessarily funded by the state in terms of state funding. We have, we have the expectation that we're meeting these standards, but we don't necessarily get the funding to support those criteria? I'm trying to get that. We're not, we don't get funded for every, my point is really, we don't necessarily get funded for everything that's being required in this report. But maybe I'm missing the mark.
Um Director Greenberg, I, you're exactly right. And there are definitely components within these six programs that that are not, that don't have funding streams attached.
Ugon.
Thank you for your presentation. Um the question that I have is um how how do you measure success of each of these programs? Do you have anything already set up, a yardstick of some sort to be able to tell um if each of these programs is meeting their um intended outcome? As you listed in your, in the PowerPoint.
Yes, we actually have um longitudinal growth performance targets that you as a board approved last spring. Um and it tracks growth um for focal groups as well as our overall student body in um in five key areas. Um our regular attenders, ninth grade on track for graduation, and third grade English language arts proficiency scores, as well as our four-year graduation rate and our five-year graduation rate. Those growth targets are laid out through the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. And when we write the integrated guidance grant for the next biennium, there will be two more additional years added onto that. ODE recognizes that those metrics are slow-moving. They're not a linear progression. Um and so our reflection, the first two years of the grant before we have two years worth of data, or first two years of the integrated guidance is um just to track that, to analyze the data and make modifications to our strategies where we see it as appropriate. And that would be reflected in our next integrated guidance um application as well. But they are, they are slow-moving, lagging measures over time.
So we can, we'll be able to tell by twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
We'll have indicators before then. So um later on this month, ODE will repres- will release three of the data sets for us. And then in mid-February, they'll release the four-year and five-year graduation rates for us. And at that point, they will um publish the data tables and visuals to go along with those data reports. You're welcome.
Tammy.
Thank you. And uh kind of a follow-up to Ugon's question. Um intended outcomes for the CTE, it says increased number of students prepared for post-secondary success with specific focus on students who are underserved slash underrepresented in CTE programs within the district. Do we have a baseline of, you know, the the percent of of those underrepresented students that are currently in the programs? What is our target, you know, is, or what other way are we measuring this intended outcome?
Thank you. I don't have that information with me today. But I do know that um PCC's PAC Tech program, which is a consortium of local school districts, has contracted with Ed Northwest to collect that data for us and worked with our school leaders and the CTE team here last spring and are continuing to work to to track um the participation rate and the persistent rate. So not only those students who take one class, but students who remain in the program and complete their credentials.
And what, thank you, and what are we doing to lower barriers to entry for these students? You know, what, in addition to tracking, how are we bringing them in?
Right. So um last spring, there was a concerted effort to ensure that at all of the curriculum nights at high schools that typically um are seeking incoming ninth graders as their audience, there were CTE tables at each of those events to not only raise awareness for students, but also raise awareness for um their family members. The CTE, and this would be the CTE half-day programs, also went out to the middle schools to host tables at lunch and even tables in their own high school cafeterias to showcase their their programs. That continued awareness raising is important so that people know that it's it's available. The other piece is that at our middle schools, each eighth grade, well, each each middle school has a program for eighth graders um called, I just blanked on the room, the Future Lab. Um but it basically is a career exploration lab for students. Last year, about forty percent of our eighth graders took that elective class. And it's um a class where the modules are aligned to not only the district CTE options, but the feeder patterns that they're option to. So students have a chance to understand what that work-based learning looks like, so they can strive strive for that.
So it sounds like we are doing significantly more outreach. And is there any targeted outreach, though, for these underrepresented groups?
I I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, no.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So what then we are doing, if I can just maybe to, as a county, we're looking at uh what pathways are have a certain level of wage. And also just looking at the demographics that go into certain pathways across the region and making sure that uh you're looking at at the equity of that. So because that, I think when you look at cosmetology, I mean, so just not to, again, there's, we're looking at that as a county and superintendent's looking at what are the, what are the programs the kids are going into? And where is there uh and gotta be careful. Why do we have certain programs still? I guess just call it out. There's certain programs that uh that uh maybe need to be revamped across the region. And I'm not speaking just here, but just as a region, we're like, we need to, we're really looking at programs right now to look at uh why we have specific programs and other programs and where is more of a need in the region, working with industry partners, as was Jill and Heather doing, to see how do we leverage higher impact jobs for our kids? And what's, does that program look like in our schools? So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sunita.
So um thank you for this information. My question is, I realize that anytime we make a change, it takes time to see the results. And so this year, we are talking about the implementation progress. And we won't see the results, or we are not asked to show the results until twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you said, right? Twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Uh the goals go out each year, all the way through twenty-seven, twenty-eight. The state is actually tracking our long longitudinal growth performance targets for us. So when um they release the results in later this month for three of the five indicators, they'll actually put it right into our spreadsheet for us to show us. So it's being tracked. It's being tracked in a way where it's common across the state for how those measurements are done. Um and that will be available uh for our community.
But for next year, we can still get this grant? And what would be our implementation progress would be like? Are we going to increase the training for more than eighty educators? How, is there a goal or something like we introduced multi-tiered system of support, student sense of belonging, third grade reading? What would be our next year's implementation?
Right. So with this year, we're really in year one of implementation for the multi-tiered systems of support with a universal tier level and um universal screeners. Next year, we'll be building off of that to identify tier two and tier three interventions for students that will be um dis- available district-wide and that will have decision points that will be common regardless of which school a student is at to be able to help ensure that students are receiving the right level of support so that they can be successful. Similarly, with the the reading intervention or the reading curriculum, we're in year one of implementation. And teachers will need continued support um throughout that, uh the use of those materials. So we'll continue training.
Thanks.
Alyssa.
To build off of what Sunita was just asking about the MTSS, so that um I appreciate that, those steps in order to go from adopting MTSS to changing graduation rates, there's a lot of in-between steps, right? There, that's a big jump. And so it's gonna take a while. And I'm wondering if the part of the plan, if our teachers and our classified staff and our administrators, now that we have MTSS, which is an enormous accomplishment all by itself, like that's something to celebrate to where we can talk apples to apples of with our students and really engage in good conversations about what instructional practices can we introduce to really leverage big changes? Tier one, like huge support so that we can change big patterns of growth for students? Do the teachers and classified staff and administrators, do they have everything they need to get ready for next year's phase two of MTSS implementation? Do you, um or are there things that we need to consider as we go into next year? Do you, or are there things that we need to consider as we go into next year to be able to prep them for that?
Thank you for that question. And, you know, one of the things that comes to mind immediately when you ask that is the notion of time for staff to collaborate and to engage in conversations around student outcomes and what the the data, for example, from the universal screener is is telling us. And and so right now, we have, you know, at the middle level, there is, there's time available for that in a way that's that's not available at the other levels. And at the elementary level, for example, we have, we have schools that are better able to get creative and carve out time for that collaboration based on a number of variables. But but when we apply the equity lens to that conversation and when we realize and acknowledge that it could be based on zip code and the school that your child attends, whether or not the staff in that school have the opportunity to collaborate and engage in those those really valuable and necessary discussions, that's the part that we need to figure out how to offer district-wide for our teachers as a support for them, for our staff in general.
Thank you. Any other comments? The one thing I did want to raise, I believe some of the measurables you named were were going to be built into the draft dashboard that we were presented in August, if I'm correct in remembering that. Couldn't open the link right now to remember, but I think some of those, like, the graduation rate, some of those, I, we don't have to answer, we can just give a yes. We don't need to do a whole.
I looked over my shoulder at the person building it, and she says yes.
Yeah, I just remembered when you named those, that they were the perspective idea that those would be available, you know, so that the public could be up to date and wouldn't maybe need to fire off email, they could just go right there once we have that up. So, awesome. Okay, with that, thank you. We will move to now receive our update on Division 22 compliance from Teaching and Learning Teams, Dr. Heather Cordy and Jill O'Neill, but Veronica Galvin and Kristi House will be joining, House, I say, House. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, Superintendent Baldetis, Vice Chair Raji, members of the board, student representatives. I'd like to first take a moment to introduce the team who's here with me. They should look familiar for a number of reasons, but we're the team that was here with you last month when we talked about Division 22. So Jill O'Neill, an executive administrator in teaching and learning, Veronica Galvin, curriculum instruction and assessment administrator, and Kristi House, our research and evaluation specialist. So I referenced last month, we were here with you to share our Division 22 report. And as you might remember, it's an annual report that is routine in nature for for school districts each year. And tonight, we have, we have an update to share with you about that report. And in doing some internal verification, after we visited with you last month, but well in advance of the due date of November fifteenth, that the report is due to ODE, we discovered that some middle school students at ACHMA were not receiving the required number of PE minutes. And so we verified the information with the school, and they confirmed those findings. And we promptly, the team promptly reached out to the state to share what we learned and that we would be updating you at this meeting this month. And they appreciated that transparency and just that quick recognition of of what we learned. Just to really, to to really try to reassure you, we're still right on track with the state deadlines for submitting the Division 22 report. As I just referenced a couple moments ago, that's due November fifteenth, and so this will be a part of that. And in order to help ensure that an oversight like this won't happen in the future, we have done a couple of things. We've instituted a verification process, not only for PE minutes across the district moving forward, but we've also created a verification process to tend to all of the areas within the Division 22 reporting. And I really appreciate the work that the team has done on that in really short order. What questions do you have for us?
Seeing none, I suppose, thank you. All right. Our last item for information is our monthly financial report from the business office. Jason Kusrow will be joining us.
Thank you. As you can tell, I'm not your regular person here. So I appreciate you giving me this chance to talk with you about our financial packets in front of you, which includes the general fund activity and forecasts, grant reports, and our investment reports. I only have a few comments to make this evening. First off, if you look at the general fund forecast, there are not any significant changes from what was presented last month. We are waiting for some additional data points, including the November payroll, which is included, which will have the OSBA bargained adjustments and retros involved. We're also waiting for the property tax turnovers that'll happen later this month and into December. And we anticipate making changes once we get that information as well. There's a couple of things that we wanted to highlight for you, that the Oregon revenue forecast is going to be released on November twentieth. So we're trying to, we're waiting for that to see what the state economists are going to say. We're also waiting for the governor to present their budget the first week in December. So.
Please, Melissa?
It seems to be a buzz about is the increase in PERS costs and the responsibility on the district. Can you share, what does that look like for this year? Is that something that will change our outlook this year? Or is, will all of that be for next year?
That, those are set for each biennium, so that it will not be a PERS increase during the current year. But, and we get the rates for the next biennium, and they get periodically reset. So it's kind of the, we know it's coming, but it's not this current fiscal year.
All right, with that, there is no other comment?
It's a lot. So it's not a, it's not little, it's a lot of increase. It's a huge, it's actually double. The PERS increases, the PERS liability to the district is going to be double what was projected, from eight to nine million to nineteen?
I don't know the exact number, but yeah.
We can get you the number, but I think it's double.
Next biennium. All right, well, with that, we'll say thank you. And and we will move to our next item is our consent agenda. As a reminder, one item has been pulled from the consent agenda, the contract authorization for the Beaverton High School stadium turf replacement. And that will be voted on separately in our items for action. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the item that was removed?
I move to approve the consent agenda as submitted with the exception of the item that was removed.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
The motion to approve the consent agenda passes unanimously. Now we will move to our items for action. Just looking at the time, I want to check, does anyone need a momentary break before we get into the items of action?
Just, I think we want to vote to approve the item that was extracted as well.
Oh, we do that now? Pardon me, I thought that was in in the items section. So let me get to. So I'm, I have a motion to approve the item.
Yeah. I move to approve the Beaverton High School stadium turf replacement contract authorization as submitted.
We have a second?
I second it.
Discussion?
Just a quick comment. I'm not going to belabor this at all. My concern about turf fields is toxicity, increased orthopedic injuries, and any environmental impact. So I'll just routinely extract and vote against, and I'm happy to have that be the end of the discussion.
Thank you. Any other comments? One, two, three, and all in favor of approving the consent agenda, pardon me, approving approve the Beaverton High School stadium turf replacement contract? Yes?
Can the KC or superintendent just say that there are no updates about the turf? Because we have always voted yes for it based on the recommendation that we have received. There are no, can you just say that there are, it's the same or no updates or anything like that?
Yeah, I believe that we provided a board update about the EPA study update. I'd have to go back and look at the exact date. That would be the only update that we had discussed in the last year or so about turf field safety. Other than that update, there hasn't have been no other updates.
So just a recommendation, whenever we bring the turf field contract, because it's going to be pulled and in, with respect to making a educated decision, if you can, if you can just present that you have looked at it, it's safe for the students so that we are voting for the safety of all the students as we know.
Yeah, we can bring the latest information.
Yeah.
Based on the studies we've referenced.
Thank you.
I also know that the last time we discussed this issue, we asked questions regarding any concerns of safety by other school districts that are using a tough field. I also want to know if that is still the same or if there has been any concerns of recent regarding the safety of tough fields in other school districts.
In discussions with our neighboring school districts and some of our contractors, no additional concerns recently have been made other than the ones that have been expressed previously.
Okay, all in favor of approving the Beaverton High School stadium turf replacement contract authorization as submitted? Raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed?
No.
That is five approved, one opposed, and one absent. Pardon me. And the item moves, and we will move to our next item. So before we begin the other items for actions, I wanted to reiterate that anyone need a moment to break, or we want to continue? I'm okay, I'll press through. I just want to, we, I want to make sure we we made a decision prior, and I think some of us got to the end, and we're like, wow, that was a little more energy than we thought. All right, so we will move to our next item for action. Hold on a moment. Oh.
Moving, okay.
Oh, just standing, okay, I was just looking.
Should I move on to the next motion, or?
Oh, let's, let me get to the item.
Yeah.
That one. Yeah. Okay. The next item for action is the superintendent evaluation. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent evaluation process as submitted?
I move to approve the superintendent's evaluation process as submitted.
A second?
Can I just say something that is not too, is it, this is the time to say it, or is it?
Then we have discussion.
I'll second it.
End discussion.
Okay.
Sunita?
I don't think this has anything, this will change our motion, will go for this year, but one thing that I wanted to make a comment on is about in the timeline section for the superintendent board goals, instead of having it in fall, where the board is approving it in fall, if we can move it to spring so that he has time to prepare, because once fall comes, already the school has started. To implement the change, changes is also hard. And this was also actually advised by the OSBA. There was a course in alignment of superintendent, you know, for evaluation. And so it, this, this suggestion was also provided by them. And that's for next year, for 2025, I would say that we bring our board goals for the superintendent to do for 2025, 2026 year, not in fall, but before that.
So to clarify that, just so I understand what you're saying, that for Gus's goals for next year, Gus would present the goals to us in the spring?
No, we would suggest it to him because there is a suggestion that we provide to him for 2025 year. And then he comes back and then we approve it, you know? Yeah, go ahead.
So goal maybe would be, is maybe we have a work session with the board, so, and we review kind of our strategic plan, our five-year strategic plan. And then the board maybe have someone come in and help with the facilitation of what the board wants are, how they're aligned to a strategic plan, so I can get my work plan. Because the work, my work plan really should be from the strategic plan, right? So what does that look like? And what, that the board needs to have input in terms of what that looks like for the year, and if there's any changes that need to have happen. I know, and that's a common practice in a, in a study session kind of format. So we can do that. So the, so the board weighs in in terms of the plan is, like, I could present, you can also say, well, let's maybe do this, this, maybe, let's move this here, move this here. And we can kind of have time to be able to to talk and just have a discussion about that. So spring, I've seen a variety of formats in my experiences. So I've seen January to January as well, because, because it's, a lot of it's budget-dependent. A lot of it's budget, like, what can we do? It's budget-dependent. So whatever the board, I mean, we could have a discussion, I can talk to leadership and come back to the board as well.
Oh, Susan? Okay.
It's a matter of me processing it. So, I mean, in terms of the motion that I just put in there, it's not really impacting those goals, but it's impacting the future goals that you have for twenty-five, twenty-six. Is that the way I'm reading it? But we would probably, if if I'm hearing this correctly, and this is why I'm asking for clarification, we would have a session in the spring. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we would have a session in spring, he would bring back our goal, his goals, and he gets, starts working on it, not in fall, but in, like, he can think about it and start. We approve it not in fall, but before that. Yeah, yeah.
Understood. Tammy?
Thank you. And I agree with Sunita. I think I'm, I learned a lot at the OSBA conference. I went to probably like three sessions on superintendent valuation, it being, you know, one of the most important roles we have. And and I do think some of my comments are for next time, feeling a little bit dissatisfied with this time, but wanting to feel very positive that we're going to, you know, have the opportunity maybe to think about doing it differently next year. And for this year, I think I had a couple of comments. I hope you all had a chance to to read our, Dr. Baldetis's contract. There was a lot of really interesting stuff in there. There's some things that I think we do need to have on our radar. This contract does expire March fifteenth. We have to make a decision to renew the contract by March fifteenth of this year. And that will happen before we evaluate, formally evaluate. And that's fine with me. I don't think any of us have any intention to not renew the contract hundred percent. And there are some particulars in the contract that I think we should talk about before March fifteenth. And, you know.
I don't think that we should be having the contract conversation right now. I mean, we're talking about Gus's goals, not his contract.
Well, there are things in the contract that we're supposed to hold him accountable for, and some of them include.
But that would be a different discussion for a different time, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I mean, it does, okay, I will, I will, it does say in here, goals. that we annually, that the board shall in consultation with superintendent. So there are things in here that I think are important. So that's fine, I will, I'll put that aside, and I hope that we can revisit the contract ahead of March 15th.
Yeah, I think we can, I don't wanna cut you off, I think we can have a, we can schedule an executive session to talk about the contract specifically, just.
That's fair. And I, and I, and I, like I said, I do think that there are things in the contract that we need to be, as a board. I think we have been not holding up our end of doing. So I just would like us to visit that. And, and, and fair, and you know, this is evaluation and, and there, there is a little bit of overlap, and I will move on from the contract, so that's fine. The, so that's fair. I guess that, that might be, the other thing I learned at the OSBA conference that I feel a little bit more comfortable with is that I, I am comfortable with the goals as presented by Dr. Baldair's. I think to Sunita's point, going forward, I think it should be driven by the board. But I'm content with them for this year. And I did note the update for learning, you know, making sure that our students are reading. So I appreciate that update. I see Susan shaking her head.
Yeah, I'm not sure I heard Sunita say that the goals should be driven by the board, and so I just wanna clarify that.
Yeah, I, I, we just give him suggestions that this is what we would like, not, not like he, but he needs to take some input from the board too. But he decides how he wants to do it.
And we've done that using the strategic plan. So the board approved, the previous board approved the strategic plan, and we've made a five-year plan of implementation. And that's how my eval, my evaluation's based on that five-year plan in terms of what we can implement every year. If the board wants to change, whatever we implement, we can discuss that or change the strategic plan. Because it's based on, everything we're doing is really based on that plan, that the board, the previous board approved. They hired me, so when we did the plan the first year.
So just to clarify, the, the strategic plan in itself is a very wide. Right, broad? And open to interpretations on what part of strategic plan that we wanna implement, maybe there is. And we would stay within that strategic plan, but maybe a piece of something that we see needs.
And the only other thing that I learned at the OSBA conference is that there is an opportunity, and, and some boards do have additional input into their evaluation. So for us last year and, and for this year, we are basing our evaluation solely on whether our superintendent has accomplished the goals that he's provided for us right now. There are opportunities for additional input. Targeted feedback surveys is one. It's not quite a 360, but it is a way for us to understand how Dr. Baldair's leads this organization. And, you know, is he a transformational leader? Is he inspiring our, you know, in elevating our, our district to, to, to be the best it can be? So I would, you know, again, this is aspirational and mostly for next year. Unless, you know, I don't know if Dr. Baldair's, you think we could at this point think about some targeted feedback surveys as part of, you know, what we're gonna do in the spring, if it's too late. But, but it would be nice to understand, in addition to the goals you're accomplishing, what the people that are working for you, you know, how, how they would, you know, rate your, your, your service to the, to the district. So just a question there.
Well, any other discussion prior? So I, I think on that, that particular piece of the process, I think we would have had to made a decision to do that. At least, that's my understanding of the process, like, before now wouldn't necessarily be just up to Dr. Baldair's, whether or not he was to be evaluated that way. Like, we would need to make some sort of motion or decision to add that to the process. But, but I may be incorrect in my understanding, but that is, so, I, I, I mean, yeah, that, and would have to be agreed, be in the contract as well, which we probably need to have an executive session to discuss, to make sure we know what is or isn't. Cause I don't think, at least, I don't know, I wouldn't, speaking for myself, I wouldn't wanna promise or decide to do something right now that I haven't confirmed that we can do. Although, not saying that that's not something we can consider in, in the future. I don't know if we can make that change, I don't think we can make that change right now on this motion that we have. Okay, any other discussion or comment? Alright, I'm gonna move, all in favor of approving contract authorization, please raise your hand and say. Okay, hold on, I'm on the wrong page, oh yeah, sorry. Approve the superintendent evaluation process as submitted, raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The motion passes unanimously and board goals. Pardon me. Is there a motion regarding the approval of our board goals?
I move to approve the board goals as submitted.
I second it.
Discussion? All in favor of approving our board goals as submitted? Raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion moves unanimously? And board policy, sorry, I'm trying to find my space on the line here. Alright. That's not the page. Sorry, I got lost in the sauce here. Alright, board policy revisions, there we are. Thank you. So our last item for action is board policy revisions with General Counsel Camelia Osterink and Chief of Staff Carrie Delf. And, alright, is, oh, we need to make a motion. Uh, is there a motion to approve the board policy revisions?
I move to approve the policy provisions as submitted.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions or comments? Start with Sunita.
So, the comment is not on this policy that you have provided, but we were at OSBA conference and they recommended in a table discussion that when we get policies, and I know that you guys take the policy guidance from OSBA, they said that we should request that we get a policy update summary that they provide, if we can have that in our, because it, it gives some information here that would make it easier for us to, you know, connect both of them. This policy update that.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify the request, you requesting a copy of what we receive from OSBA that has the summaries attached to that?
Yeah.
I'm sure that we can provide that to you all, if that would be helpful. Do know that the summaries that we provide you in your board packet are largely taken from the summary statements that are there. So we're, we're pulling that information over. But that is certainly something we can also provide.
It looked more condensed, so if we can have this, it would be really helpful. Thank you.
You got it?
I have a question on DJCA. On DJCA, I want to understand what those personal services contracts are. Because it states that the district may enter into a personal services contract with the current district employee, dot, dot, dot. So is this in addition to the employee's job description? Or is this a separate contract? I wanna understand that language.
But I'm trying to find the exact language that you're referring to.
Yeah, the, but personal services contracts, DJCA.
Yeah, so, so in that sentence that you're referring to, what it, what is stating is that we can only enter into a contract with a current employee if that person meets the definition of an independent contractor that is driven by state law. So typically speaking, we really can't, we really don't enter into contracts with our own active employees, like a separate personal services contract with them. Cause often, I mean, they would have to, they would have to be, there's like 10 different criteria to meet the definition of an independent contractor. Bringing your own tools, directing your own work, so you're not doing work at the direction of the, of the district. I believe, I'm not remembering all 10 off the top of my head. But there, there's a list of criteria in order to be able to call somebody an independent contractor. And so what this language is saying is that the district wouldn't enter into a personal services contract with one of their own employees unless they met that definition of an independent contractor.
Right, so if they met this, all the definitions, so what we're doing is, this is an employee and also a contractor for the district.
It's an uncommon circumstance, and this is not language that is changing in the policy. This has been existing language. But just to provide an example, in another location, we once had an employee who was an administrative support person, and in their own time, were a professional photographer. And so that person was hired on a contract basis to do some photography work separate from their employment. They were treated, they were, they were contracted with separately from that employment. So that is a, it's, it's an unusual circumstance, but that's an example to help you picture when that, that sort of thing might come up.
So do we have any concerns of conflict? Is there any concerns of conflict?
Yeah, there's always a, a potential concern around conflict of, of interest and, and how we are selecting that individual. So, you know, those are all things that we would have to look at before we would award a contract. I actually got a question about that maybe about two weeks ago with respect to an employee who had done some programming work. They serve in a completely different role for us, but they had done some programming work and were wanting to potentially sell their time back to us to offer that programming to another one of our sites. And we had to work through the potential conflict there about whether or not they were creating some of that stuff on district-owned property and whatnot, and if they could even be paid for, for kind of what that work was. So we definitely evaluate that when, when those things, you know, come forward. Another example that comes to mind would be, you know, we might have somebody who is a teacher for us during the school year, and then they run their own painting business on the side over the summer, and we might enter into a contract with them to do some painting work. Completely different work, but again, we would be looking at, how are we selecting them? Are they getting some sort of competitive advantage or avoiding a disadvantage in getting that work? So yes, we do evaluate that with all of those contracts, particularly when we're talking about an existing employee. Yeah, and as Carrie said, it's, it's a particularly rare situation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
For clarifying that for me.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor of approving the policy provisions, please raise your hands and say yes?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, now we will move to our items for future action. First up tonight, we have our OSBA election for consideration before voting on approval at a future meeting. Carrie?
Yes, thank you. So the Oregon School Boards Association annually has an election that is, the voting is done not by individual school board members, but by school boards across the state that are members of OSBA. On the ballot that the board will be submitting votes in are a couple of seats on the OSBA board, position 15 and position 20. Each of those have a single candidate who is running, that they're not contested elections. And the board also is asked to vote on three different resolutions. One, to establish an LGBTQS, 2SIA+ caucus with positions on the board and Legislative Policy Committee. One, to increase dues paid by OSBA members phased in over several years. There's information in your packet about what the impact of that would be. It, it's a substantial increase that would actually be a lower percentage increase for Beaverton than for most other school districts, because Beaverton is already fairly close to the new cap that they would be providing. And a third resolution to amend the OSBA bylaws in a number of ways, including some housekeeping, some changes in election of board officers, as well as some of the, some of the changes in those other resolutions. So this is brought before the board for information and consideration at this time to be voted on in your next board meeting, which does come before the deadline to submit those votes to OSBA. And when the board votes, whatever the board decides, that will be the vote that is submitted to OSBA, is the board will vote yes to support this candidate or no to abstain on that position, and that is the vote that will be submitted to OSBA, not seven individual votes.
Thank you. Next, pardon me, our second item for future action is bond program update with Casey Walertich and Erin Boyle.
Thank you, as we're getting started here with this financial update, just, we have some information specifically regarding our contingency bond program. We did give this presentation to our bond accountability committee. Thanks, Sunita, for being there and asking some questions. And at the end, they were all supportive of, of the plan that we're gonna present tonight and supportive of where we are with our contingency program. I'm gonna let Erin kick it off, and then we'll supplement any type of questions that you guys may have. Thanks.
Thank you for having me tonight, Erin Boyle. I'm the administrator for facilities development, so I oversee the bond program. So we're here tonight to present information, like Casey just said, on the financial status of the bond. So at a high level, the bond is in really, really good shape right now. Do we, oh, here, that was me. Okay, here we go. So we are a couple of years into the bond, past in 2022, it's about a six-year bond. And where we're at right now is we've committed a large number of our projects, meaning Beaverton High School is underway on budget, Raleigh Hills is underway on budget, and a number of other projects as well. So we are at a point where we can look ahead at the rest of the projects scheduled in the bond and, you know, see how our budgets are holding up to today's market conditions and what we know more about design and everything. And so that's a lot of what this presentation is gonna be about. So first, I wanna define contingency for you all. So contingency is a budget that we carry in construction to deal with unforeseen costs. We, we do cost estimates for projects, but it's really hard to capture every little cost that's gonna come up on a project. There's just stuff you don't know about that you have to deal with. And there's a number of different types of contingency. So we have project contingencies, that's money within a project budget. That's not what we're gonna be talking about tonight, but typically, most of these projects, we target about 10% starting off. There's contractor contingency, when we have a negotiated CMGC contract, that'll be within, within that contract to deal with buyout challenges or coordination challenges, things like that. We have design and estimating contingency, it helps us narrow in on, you know, the correct cost of a construction project. And then lastly, we have program contingency, so that's what we're talking about tonight. That is contingency that's held in the bond program outside of project budgets. The way we operate right now is that we need school board approval to allocate that program level contingency to projects if it's in excess of a million dollars. So right now, for the whole bond program, we have 74, about $74 million in program level contingency, meaning it's not allocated to any specific project. That number started at 43, it's gone up for a couple of reasons that I'll talk about. So here we see, it started at 43 million, has gone up. At the beginning of the bond, that 43 million. At the beginning of the bond, that 43 million represented about 6% of the costs of uncommitted work. So that was kind of our buffer to make sure we're able to compete, complete those $680 million worth of projects. 6%, keep that in mind. So right now, where we're at is that it's changed pretty significantly. It's changed firstly because our contingency has increased. It has increased because two main factors. Number one, we received a pretty significant bond premium when we sold the first half of the bonds. So the bond was 723 million. We go out and sell about half of them because there's requirements about when you can, you have to spend that money by. So we only do half. We're getting ready to do the other half here in a couple of months. But when we sold that, market conditions were such that we received a bond premium of 16 and a half million. Oh, and I noted on there, there's a good chance we'll get another bond premium when we do the, the second bond sale. No guarantees, but that's kind of what we're hearing right now. The other big piece that's been really wonderful is interest earnings. So when we sell that $320 million, that money goes into a bank account until we sell it. And our business office is able to invest that money while we, you know, work on spending. We can't spend it all immediately, takes quite a bit of time to spend that much money. In the meantime, it's sitting there earning interest. And that has been significant with market conditions. So we're 18 and a half million dollars of interest earnings right now. So both of those two numbers go straight back into the program-level contingency. The other thing that's changed quite a bit, I alluded to earlier, is we've made a lot of progress in, in executing and committing the bond projects. So when we started out the bond, we had $680 million uncommitted, meaning we hadn't, you know, signed any contracts, done any work on any of them. Now, today, we're at $250 million uncommitted, meaning that, that difference is work that is underway, under contract. For instance, Beaverton High School being the largest one, it's under contract. It's a $220 million contract that is at much less risk now that is under contract. So when we look at our contingency percentage related to the uncommitted work in the bond, it's at 29% right now. So that is our buffer to be able to complete those projects. So it's, when you look at where we started the bond and where we're at today, it's, it's very significant. And the story it tells is that we're in a really good shape financially to be able to complete the bond projects. So where that takes us is looking ahead, looking at a future projects in the bond. And the further you go out, the harder it is to anticipate costs for these projects. Our main focus here is to build and complete everything that was committed to the voters, and that is our intention. And so what we did is we looked at all of the bond projects that have yet to be started. And I've noted here a number of ones that we feel would be appropriate to do some budget adjustments to those projects using program contingency. And I'll, I'll talk about each one of these. But there's, it kind of boils down to two things, jurisdictional requirements and project needs assessments. So these first three, we've talked a little bit about this issue, so I don't think this will be new to you guys. But there have been, in the past few years, a lot of new requirements related to how we deal with stormwater on projects. You have to crap, capture the stormwater, keep it on site, and you have to treat it before it leaves the site. And if you think about how, how big our sites are and how much stormwater we have, it's a significant cost. It, it looks like giant underground detention systems on all these projects, and they're hugely expensive. So for the three projects I've listed here, that is the main driving cost factor. Allen Transportation, it's replacing our bus repair facility down on Allen Boulevard. It's just, it's a big site, a big project, and there's no existing stormwater treatment or detention. So we'll be adding that, we'll be required to add that. Same thing with Aloha High School. This, the Aloha High School project is converting the existing grass fields to artificial turf. And in doing so, it, it just triggers these stormwater requirements. And same thing for Westview.
If you remember, this is the conversation we had about a, a pretty significant conversation about a year ago with South Ridge when we informed the board that there's the new clean water services requirements that we would be coming with projects related to turf and some maybe not related to turf based on, on the project.
So the goal with those two specifically is really to bring them up to the same level as all the other high schools. So Sunset, South Ridge, Mountainside, all have these amenities. And we're doing them at Beaverton as part of the project. But then, in order to bring Aloha and Westview up to the same standard, would need to make some more upgrades. Then the other three projects are more unique and each a little bit different. But these are all three projects in the bond that we, upon further investigation here, felt it was most appropriate to change how we were going about doing it. So the outdoor learning group of projects, this specifically is looking at putting a field at the Capital Center. Capital Center currently has no existing outdoor anything, like no place to go. And this would be to create a couple of small, like foot-size sized fields and an eighth of a mile track, converting parking lot into play area, basically.
This is, I was just going to add to it, you know, this is something, the outdoor learning in specifically my interactions with staff and programming across the district. When we, when I met with our programming at the Capital Center, you know, pretty three significant programs, our, our base programs, our special education ACTE program, CTP programs, and our Flex Online. There is literally no green space there for students to exercise in a safe manner. So while this program, this specific, outdoor learning was a specific project within the 2022 bond, there wasn't one specifically identified for the Capital Center. This is to meet, you know, kind of our operational needs for that site, to give those students the opportunity to have a safe place to recreate outside that is not a sidewalk or a parking lot.
The next one are security upgrades. So we, and we've been doing a lot of work on security upgrades. And really, this is just the cost estimate as we've really developed these comprehensive standards for all of our systems at all of the schools. So we have been doing, adding, adding cameras, adding intrusion, adding access control. What wasn't initially included in the bond was replacing our distributed antenna systems, server replacements, radio replacements, and cameras. It's really just, we have a, a full grasp of what those systems need to look like now, and this is reflecting that.
I think one of the, the main changes to where we initially budgeted for this is, the initial thought was to add pieces to our systems that we had. So instead of, I'll use the camera example. Instead of comprehensively utilizing cameras to cover the interior and exterior of our buildings, the initial upgrade was to add a couple. Same thing with access control. The initial was to add, in the initial bond promise was to add these at high school and some of our option schools. Well, when we're looking at a comprehensive security upgrade for our buildings and functionality in conjunction with extra keys and, and how we want to safely be able to monitor and see what's going on within our buildings, it's been pretty obvious that the, the most economical and best practice to do that is to fully outfit our, our buildings that, in the systems that they need to function. Just a little bit of information on the DAS system, distributed antenna system. That is mainly for our first responders to be able to communicate within our building, whether that is fire, ambulance, police, our current buildings that have a lot of concrete and steel in them. If you don't have distributed antenna systems within the building, they are not able to communicate out through Washington County 911 to get help, to assist. And so as, that, that is a big addition. As we went through our in-building communications to actually do a radio frequency test of buildings so we can determine what buildings need them, and the list is significant. I don't have that right off the top of my head, but it is pretty significant. And what this will do is allow our first responders to be able to communicate within, when they're in the building without, with the Washington County 911 and their incident command centers for whatever is going on within a building. So that's just a little bit of background on the initial budget and, and the, the project needs assessment to increase the dollar amount for those buildings.
And then the last one I have noted here is nutrition services upgrades. So this is specifically at Beaver Acres. The, the original project identified a kitchen replacement at Beaver Acres. It's kind of hard to fully explain how horrible the kitchen is, but it's, it's really bad. It's really, really old, it is scabbed together over many years. There's many significant grade changes, the freezer and cooler are outside. There's all sorts of weird transitions. And in looking at what that new kitchen might look like, and talking with the school staff, it really became apparent that the, just remodeling that kitchen was not the appropriate solution. Really what the school needs is a new cafeteria and a new kitchen. The current cafeteria was sized when the school was originally built, and the student population was like 200 students. And I forget the exact number now, but it's, it's like 800 or so students right now.
Yeah, about 800.
And it's really, the space in the cafeteria is just not adequate. I, I was assigned lunch duty there during COVID when, you know, when we all had lunch assignments. And it, lunch was done in the gym every day and the cafeteria, just because there wasn't enough room to do it properly. And what this project would do would be to add a new kitchen and cafeteria on the back of the school, a much more convenient location for kids to be able to access recess. Because right now, it's all the way across the school, all the way down the hallways, disrupting kids who are in class. They lose a lot of time in passing, going back and forth. And really, there's, it's just the, the more appropriate solution instead of just remodeling the kitchen. And this is what those adjustments look like. And, you know, the specific dollar amount for each project, it's really pretty near the amount of added revenue we've received in the bond, which is nice. So after the, the budget allocation, our program contingency would be pretty close to where we started. And with the risk being much less at the same time because of the number of projects we had committed. So we feel very confident that this is the right thing to do right now in order to complete these projects the right way. And I think that's it, unless Casey has anything to add?
No, I think the main takeaway is just the, as we did that project needs assessment and defined all of the, the projects coming up in the bond, taking into account the amount of projects we've already started, the greatest risk. Now is the time to start looking at how to fulfill the majority of these projects that were the voter commitments. As opposed to waiting, it'll never be cheaper to do it now. And these are projects that are, are essential. And we've done a, a really good job of utilizing resources with our bond dollars and, and savings on projects, that whether it be adding to the contingency based on the bond premium sale or the quarterly interest. We will still continue to see those happen. And we will be able to continue, the forecast is to be able to continue to bring the program contingency up. One of the things that we will be working on is, as we kind of hit the halfway point of the bond program, and we have a lot of this stuff identified, identifying a process in which to start to identify additional projects towards the end of the bond that are within this program contingency. So we're keeping track of when we're out and about at buildings, a, a, a school set. We really would need to have this considered as we go. Or there will be some items, especially on the technology side, and include camera systems. As we get down to the bond, those camera systems and all of the IT-related things, we'll need to have a replacement cycle. So that'll be something that we bring as we work in conjunction with the bond accountability committee in looking at how, what is the process and how do we prioritize the number of projects that we have left with the, the wants and needs? And also, what are some of the savings that we need to keep, knowing that there's going to be certain replacement items that we want to be able to have so we can allocate those towards the end? So we are very aware of that, also knowing we have a really significant deferred maintenance pot of money that we are utilizing. That won't last forever. I want to say in the original bond outlook, we, we had over $700 million in deferred maintenance that's needed. So we're, we're attacking that. But as we get down and the risk gets lower and our program contingency remains high, we will be developing a process to prioritize the buckets that we need to spend that as we, as the bond, this bond sunsets. We're happy to, I mean, there's no action tonight, this is for future action. We are happy to answer any kind of questions that you may have with this, and we'll certainly talk about it more at the December meeting.
All right, we'll start.
Thank you for sharing, and a celebration for your team. I think some of us in the room have been here during a bond program financial update that wasn't as pretty a couple, quite a few years ago. And it's not accidental that yours is a much more fun update to offer. And I just am so grateful, Sunita, for joining the bond accountability committee. And then also your teams really being collaborative and thoughtful about using our taxpayer dollars really wisely. So gratitude to your team and the bond accountability team. And then also just a recognition with our community that we got this voted in by our community. So gratitude to our community for supporting us in the work. And you mentioned it with the deferred maintenance. And I was thinking, gosh, we're increasing outdoor learning spaces, which is so wonderful, I love that. And then also increased amounts of security, which we need to consider. And I just thought, oh, gosh, is everybody ready to, if we're going to invest, are we ready to also maintain for years and years and years to come? So are we increasing our budget long-term for maintenance of increased square footage of outdoor learning space? Or is that part of the plan too? So thank you, and then just the maintenance question.
Yeah, certainly, the, as you add square footage of, you know, fields, there, there will be an increase. You know, one of the benefits, as we look at, in this particular case with artificial, the, the maintenance, the actual maintenance is much less than a, you know, it's not something we have to mow and we have to continually maintain, it's year-round access. So looking at it, program, for a program model, the, the short-term maintenance is less. Now, those, those fields will need to be replaced down the road as we do all of our turf fields. But the, the initial maintenance of our existing staff for a project like this will be minimal. The cost will be associated when that field wears out and we need to replace it. Not the daily or monthly maintenance of this field, of a field like that. As far as the, the security upgrades, upgrades, you know, there is some cost associated with it. That's why we'll need to be really proactive in determining costs as we move, either save some from this program contingency moving forward for replacement, or looking at as we prioritize and start preparing for the next bond to go out, making sure that we're able to address those upfront costs within the, the prioritization of those funds.
Tammy?
Just happy you found so much change in the couch cushions. These are great projects. I'm thrilled for B Breakers, and I'm really impressed with the creative solution instead of remodeling. You guys are just like, we need a new kitchen, so I'm really excited for them. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, I think this is really good, thanks a lot. Just, you know, we are very lucky to have that interest in premiums. And we have done, you know, like, if we didn't have that, about 80% of our contingency would be gone, right? Our original program contingency would be gone. So, but we still have $38 million. Have you um estimated for the ones that had, we haven't started, the projects that it will be enough and will be good?
Yeah, if you, um, one of the things that um Aaron and his team did is in the project needs assessment. This would be in the um, the board one pager. It's more than one page. But the team went through and analyzed all of the known projects that we have to determine if there are um projects that we are concerned with. We evaluated those, the budgets of those projects to make sure that we had enough built in contractor, owner, conti- other contingencies uh to determine, to make sure, is there some other projects out there that we haven't got far enough into the planning for? And there are one or two minor projects that we may need to address. But we feel really good about uh being able to address those um with our current contingency and even separate of this discussion. So we really feel great about our project needs and the risks associated with all of the outlined voter commitments moving forward.
Great. That's good to hear. Thank you so much. Yeah.
All right, uh, well, thank you. And we will move our uh last item for future action is board policy revisions with General Counsel Camelia Osterink and Chief of Staff Carrie Delft.
All right. Thank you, Justice. Thank you, Board. We have three policies that we're bringing forward uh for your consideration this evening. Um, these are part of a slate of health related policies. We're going to have several more next month. Um, related to a slew of legislative action that happened. Actually, I believe it was not, uh, it was the last full session. So we're we're getting caught up and and moving through uh these policies. The first one that we're bringing forward to you is an entirely new policy, um, the student health services policy. This one reflects, um, like I said, the legislative movement towards um really articulating districts having a health services plan and all of the different parts and pieces that will go into that larger plan. Um, uh, the entirety of this policy was drafted by OSBA. Um, the next one that we are bringing forward for your consideration is um the injury or illness report policy. Um, these are just some changes to the verbiage in here to better align with this, the changes to the statutes and the OARs around um all of our reporting requirements when we have students, staff um or the visiting public that suffers an injury or illness on our property. Um, there are legal definition updates in there as well. Um, I would say the majority of the language that's in there is taken almost entirely from statute. Uh, so there's not a lot of wiggle room around a lot of, a lot of that verbiage. And then the last one we're bringing forward is J H C A slash J H C B. So the physical, excuse me, the vision screening and the eye exam dental screening information has now been incorporated into that health services plan, which is why you see that kind of getting gutted out of this policy. What's left is the immunization and the school sports participation language, which we are still required to have in policy. It's kind of an awkward. Um, as we looked at it, we're like, hmm, those are two interesting things to pair together. But that that's what's left in this policy after you take out the other stuff that's incorporated into the um health services plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions folks have.
Tammy?
On E B B A, um, number eleven. Uh, it's interesting. It calls out um students with life threatening food allergies and adrenal insufficiency, which is pretty rare. Um, and I'm curious about, and again, I know this comes from OSBA, so maybe there isn't any reason to add um insulin dependent diabetic students, but um that's also a a student with a potentially life threatening. And I would hope that our um people that are caring for medically fragile, even you know, a random third grader with insulin dependent diabetes would be able to recognize a hypoglycemic event. Um, prevent, you know, DKA and any kind of further. So I don't know like how to, you know, what you would do, Camelia, with this question I'm asking, you know, do you ask OSBA and just be like, hey, what about diabetics that came up in the school board meeting? Or if you're just like, no, it's fine, Tammy, we can just move on. Um, but for me, that seemed like a more common disease than adrenal insufficiency that seems to have been left off. So I'm not sure why that is.
I think that's a fair question. Um, this verbiage at this, this list of eleven is literally in the OAR. So OSBA has just pulled those requirements over into the policy. So it's a fair question as to why the legisla- or the um, well, the legislature that writes the OARs, but the um, the department that drafts the OARs or administrative rules left that one out of that particular grouping. I feel like the insulin piece is covered in one of the other OARs that I read. So I can do a little research and figure out where I saw that when we were reviewing all of these. I do feel like it is covered elsewhere. Um, and I came across it when I was looking at stuff.
Yeah, no, and I'm not questioning OSBA or, you know, the legislature per se. I just, it seemed like an oversight. And if it is covered elsewhere, great. I just, um, I'm I'm hopeful that whoever is caring for our students would also have that on their, on their mind. Thanks.
duly noted. Thank you.
Any other? I just had a thought as I was reviewing this. I know that we had in, within our district, like the Virginia Garcia Clinic that like provided health services to students. I just was curious if we had any either existing reports like that would in any way just as board members would inform our understanding of like why this policy is important and make sure we're not maybe missing something that we already know from our own experience in the district. So it's more of an open question for research than a very specific question, but it came up in my mind as I was reviewing this. Um, just to make sure that, you know, we may know something that we need to know for our district uh that OSBA didn't have to think about. Um, so I would.
So that's a fair question. The relationship that we have with our um school based health clinics, they're school based. They don't actually report, do any reporting to us of um the medical data of their patients. Um, but we do have a great relationship with them to be able to offer that in house so that folks can have access to it. Um, but we don't, we, they don't do any reporting to to us directly. Um, we work with them around immunizations and other things to make sure that those programs are happening. Um, but yeah, there's not that that direct reporting relationship about that information.
Appreciate you. All right, um, with that, uh, thank, thank you for sharing it. Uh, so that was our final topic and our last uh agenda item is comments and community reports from board members and our student representatives. Um, I guess I'll open up the students first.
Um, I have a quick update about early college, so what's happening at the early college high school program. Um, I remember like the last board meeting, I told about the winter application that opened up. And um there were sixty two students selected from all comprehensive high schools. Um, and they'll be actually applying for their classes this Thursday. Um, we also have one of our counselors, Alan, and he is helping students of with their college applications, scholarships and uh financial aid help. And we have um students um that are, I think this is really unique about the program. Students are given like personal guidance. They have help from the staff, their counselors, but it's like a one on one meeting. Um, this term, we're having a one on one meeting with our counselors, talking about um what classes we're applying for, how this relates to our future goals. So I think we're really like empowering students, making sure they're feeling supported. Um, and whatever that they're doing is contributing towards their future goal. Um, and something that I did want to talk about, I think we had a great discussion about the AI policy. Um, so some things that came up as I was thinking was um the training. Um, talking about, I think this is gonna be uh brought up into the guidelines, but talking about um the trainings that's provided not only to teachers about AI, but also students. Cause it's like at this point, it's about cybersecurity too. Like what informations are student gonna put in chat GPT? Are they allowed to put their personal information? Are they uh aware enough about um the information that they're supposed to put in and the output that I get, like just so like students are safe, I think, um, cause that part can be missed. And um, I didn't know how to state this, but um how can chat GPT be used for not only just like students, students, but also students with like learning disabilities and students with concerns? How are we gonna make sure those students are included into this environment? And um, um, this is about the cell phone policy. And it's just a lack of inclusion. I think we talked about this, but the lack of inclusion that it's creating, that's why my question came up about like the drop in percentage from middle school to high school. Cause we're seeing that now that there's a cell phone policy, students bring their own devices and it's just creating an uninclusive environment and students are like discriminated and that's not what we're aiming for, right? That's all for me.
Thank you. Any other? Um, y'all can flip a coin. Whoever wants to go first.
Um, I just want to kind of add on to us. I was saying especially about kid creating this gap between students that have their own personal devices that they bring to school. Um, I was seeing this especially, I was talking with a couple of students, but besides that, um, let's see here. Um, there was that some students were seeing like there was an equity divide as a result of uh cell phone policy and just uh device policy in general, like uh bring your own device and stuff like that. And um, you know, maybe students who can't afford um the newer devices that can't afford uh devices other than the Chrome that they provided, how the the, it makes this separation between students who can afford and students who have avail- uh who have these devices available and students who don't. And that was making like an unnecessary divide between students, even if it wasn't intentional or even if it's not seen um as obviously.
Yeah, I also feel like with like the AI and cybersecurity, like in elementary school, we have a lot of like digital cit- digital citizenship and stuff. And I feel like in high school, there's less of that. So I feel like now we should probably incorporate more like AI and how to be safe with it and what to do with it and what we can and can't use it for. Um. Yeah, also like just the whole, what we can and can't use it for. Like some, some of my teachers will be like, we can use it for whatever we wanted to use it for, as long as it's not an actual assignment. We can cite it if we want to. Others say like to completely stay away from it, but we, I feel like at this point, we can't shy away from it anymore. So I think it's good that we're starting to focus more on it and stuff.
Thank you. Thank you.
I echo many of these same notions that my peers have. I also have another short message. I'll keep it short and sweet. The most prominent concern that I have directly and indirectly heard from students at Westview and across the district has by far been regarding a potential strike, which would blockade doors to learning. Schools, educational facilities and students' learning cannot and will not be present without educator's support. Students accro- around the district and myself share the same resolve. Please reach a favorable and fair contractual agreement with our hardworking BSD teachers and staff. Thank you.
Comments from Susan?
Number one, I appreciate our students' voices um on our board and I'm very excited that you're all here. I, um, it's really good to hear your perspective. Um, the other thing I wanted to share is that I I got to, I got to go. I was, I went to the Southridge Play a couple of weeks ago and it was a lot of fun. And it's good to see um students um expressing themselves through an art form. And I'm very much appreciated about that. And the last thing I want to comment about is um, I really, really, really appreciate Gus's um comments earlier today about um, incur, letting our kids and students know that the safest place for our students that are at risk is our public schools. So I just wanted to thank you for your comments earlier, Gus.
Thank you. All right, go next, Melissa.
I wanted to just share some gratitude for the folks who have been willing to come to our public meetings to make public comments. And I know that um we have a lot going on in our community and I really appreciate and respect folks taking the time to make public comments, send us emails and show up to the meetings in public spaces to share their um concerns and questions and celebrations. So I really appreciate everyone taking the time to do that. Um, I've been able to visit schools. We had the school showcase. And I'll highlight Southridge, which isn't in my zone, but I used to teach at Southridge, so I feel like it's still part of my home. And um, we were at the Oregon School Board Association um conference and Sa- a Southridge um student group performed there. I was at the veterans' um celebration for Beaverton yesterday and a Southridge student group performed there. And then I came here today and a Southridge student group performed here. It was three different student groups. Um, very different um talents being presented. And it was just a reminder of all the amazing work that our teachers and our students do to try very hard things. The courage they have to put themselves out there and to share their talents with us. And just so much to be proud of for our teachers and our students. And I'm very proud of our school district. So, thank you.
Uh, Selena?
I want to echo Susan's comment about the student voices. I truly appreciate your perspective into um our board meetings that you bring. That's very, very helpful to us to know what you all are facing and going through. Um, I also want to um express my gratitude to the teachers and the administration who put up the school showcase. It was nice to see all the schools. Um, I will pick up what I learned from flex time. Uh, that is, and it might be helpful for our students that you don't have to be a flex time student, but you can use the resource library. They have tremendous amount of resources that you can use during summertime. You can self enroll yourself. If you're struggling with any class, math, science, you can get uh taped uh videos to see how you can help yourself. Also, they pro- they have licenses to help with ACT, SAT exams and stuff during summertime. If you're not in a summer school and you have the time, you can prepare for those exams. So I thought that was very, very helpful. I did not know that. And um, I had a chance to go to Aloha Huber School with uh Dr. Balderez. And I was very impressed with um how they are combating with bullying in their school, how with making small tweaks and and having good communication with the bus driver, make, giving feedback to the students who are not only may having problems, but also um celebrating the students who are doing well and and behaving well. So that was good to see. And always I want to say, I attended the BAC meeting. That was great. You guys do excellent job and it's always nice to see what you are doing with the dollars that has been trusted by the community. Um, I was impressed with the fact that um BAC has hired eight students and given them experience and um maybe we can do more. It's more than last year, so maybe next year it will be even more. Um, and one thing that Aaron didn't say was that you guys have uh updated your website, which is great. And he showed us a movie with, I mean, a video, a short video of what is being done with all the dollars that we are using for the uh improvements that are being made. So thank you. Thank you for all the work that you guys do. And Audit Committee, I will leave it for Justice.
Thanks. You got it.
Thank you, um, Justice. Um, so the first um information that I'll be sharing tonight is regarding uh the broad evaluation process. Um, we had a few meetings uh to discuss that process and with the help of Carrie, we received information on the OSBA uh extensive evaluation process. We considered that and we uh decided that it would be best to stick with our current process as it is. Um, we don't have to fix anything if it's not broken. With the OSBA extensive process would require us to engage a consultant. That is also going to cost us some money. So we decided to um keep our process as it is at this time. However, if the broad decides at some point that they would like to um However, if the board decides at some point that they would like to review that or explore other options, we can always come back to the table and revisit this this process. So as it stands now, we're going to stay with our current evaluation process as it has always been. And the next thing I want to talk about is the Beaverton Education Foundation. Last month, we concluded the Answer the Call campaign, and I want to thank everybody who actually answered the call. It was also very interesting and refreshing as well to mentor. I had to serve as a mentor for one of the nights, and it was interesting to watch our students actually get on the phone and make calls. And believe it or not, they were able to raise some money. Our students do have those skills, fundraising skills that I didn't know they had. And they exhibited those skills that particular night. And then, as you know, BEF has collaborated with the district to raise funds. This project is called Feed My Body, Feed My Brain. We are collaborating with the district. BEF is collaborating with us to raise funds to feed our, some of our low-income students during the winter break. As of today, the broad members, every board member has contributed to this cause. And I want to say thank you to each and every one of you for supporting us. It's very important for BEF to know that they have the support of the school district, especially of the board. And your donation has shown them how much commitment we have towards our students. So I want to say thank you on behalf of BEF and to our community members who have not yet come on board on this project. I do ask you, I humbly ask that you please support this project and make a donation. And the next thing I want to say is thank you to our educators, our staff. We have heard from you immensely, and we do have nothing but respect and admiration for all the work that you do for our students. And believe it or not, I, I can't wait for the bargaining process to come to an end. However, I do have faith on the, on the process, and I'm hopeful that we will come to a fair conclusion, to a fair resolution of the, of the bargaining. So we are still bargaining. We are still negotiating. I just ask that we continue to be patient and continue to be hopeful that a fair resolution is on the horizon. With that, I say thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Agana. I, I think, like a lot of people sitting up here, after this past week, I'm worried. I'm worried for our undocumented families. I'm worried for our immigrant families that are documented. I'm worried for our Muslim community. I am worried for our LGBTQ community. I'm worried especially about our trans community. And I do want to say to everyone that I know I'm speaking on behalf of everyone sitting up here, the board, Dr. Balderez, that you are safe in our schools. And I have asked, just so that we can clarify with our community, that we know what our process is if ICE shows up at our doors. I want our community to know that we stand with them and that we don't cooperate with ICE and that, at least for our, our immigrant families, we can, we can stand and say that we, we will make sure that you're protected in our school buildings. So just wanted to say that. And I also wanted to express again, based on this results of this past week, I'm worried about the future of public education. I know we all are. I did get a text from a parent that I just wanted to share real quick. Hi, Tammy. I am a father of two young girls in the Beaverton School District. I am concerned about the future of public education in Beaverton and elsewhere. I know that the incoming administration has plans to attack and defund public education. I spent all week thinking about what we can do to change course. I keep coming back to this Martin Luther King Jr. quote, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. The place where we have a vast amount of light and love to give is through educating our children. As caring parents, family, and friends, we already do that, but we need to make sure we start supporting our teachers even more. Their jobs become even more important and harder. Important because one thing a teacher can do is continue to help kids gain the knowledge and skill set to recognize misinformation, lies, and propaganda in today's world. Truth has been losing ground. Perhaps we need to fight for having more of this in our curriculum. Their job becomes even harder because in January, I know that this kind of education will come under attack. Educators have the most important and influential job in our country. Other than parents, they have the most light and love to give. Beginning in January, our educational system will come under attack. Defunding public education, attacking curriculum, and banning books are all a part of the agenda. This is one place where we cannot afford to lose. Let's support our teachers, be there for them, give them your love and light. Let's begin by paying them a just and equitable salary that reflects the last three years of inflation and a salary that will help retain good teachers in the coming fight. Andy, thank you.
So what I will add is, one, I want to thank our Audit Committee, you know, a part of our process as a, as a school district and our budgeting and the other work that we do is also making sure someone else takes a look at how we practice, how different pieces of our work is spent and the vast complexity that we may not all understand of federal funding, which is a subject of concern, given current environment. And I was happy in my second opportunity to serve on the Audit Committee to really see the remarkable work that our internal controls are doing to make sure we're using our resources appropriately, that we're being accountable when questions are asked. And also, and I don't remember if the whole audit is available yet for folks to read. I think it'll be sometime in the future. I'm not sure exactly when. But when the, when the time comes, I encourage you to understand the public documents that are produced. Talk about our district are a part of the way that we all, as a community, can have accountability in what we're doing and speak from information, not maybe what we've heard. So with that, other note, I would say, one, I just wanted to thank you, one, for everyone's grace tonight and our care and respect for our colleague and her family and her not being able to be here. Also, Dr. Perez, wherever you are, we send you positive vibes. And yeah, generally, I think just remembering, Kim said, oh, I want to say to our young people, thank you for being here again. You, you always bring something. And as we keep having you here, I look forward to hearing more from you and us having robust engagement as we work on the future of our district. So with that, for me, I'll pass.
I want to thank Justice for running the meeting in a quick order. I think we got a text message later, late in the afternoon, and quick study. And, and also for, you mentioned our students for staying the entire meeting. I've had students on other boards, so thank you for being here and being contributors to the process. So thank you for your commitment. Thank you, Board. Thank you.
With no other agenda items, the November twelve, twenty twenty-four Business Meeting of the Beaverton School Board is adjourned at ten thirteen.